I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June meeting of the Arundicuate Zoning Board of Appeals. Before we get underway considering matters on the agenda, I'd like to go over just a few preliminary matters. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator. Use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. Our meetings are being recorded by our secretary, Donna, tonight for the purpose of a record in minutes, so when you come to the podium, please identify yourself with your name and your address and speak into the microphone. The recording that she's making is for purpose of minutes; it is not for a transcript, so we just need you to speak clearly and make sure she can identify who is speaking at each time. We will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table near the door. The process works as follows: the case will be called, and the applicant will come forward. They'll come to the podium, identify himself or herself, state their address, pause, raise their hands, be sworn, and then they'll present their case. During the presentation of the case, the applicant or their representative may be interrupted by questions or comments or discussions that the board wishes to initiate, and once that process has completed, the applicant will then be seated and will open it up to public input. We have several categories of public input. The first is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. If there's more than one of you, we'd ask you to line up on the west side of the room and come up to the podium, speak, tell us whatever you have with reference to that application, and then let the next person speak until everyone who's in favor of the application has had an opportunity to speak. Then we'll ask those people who are opposed to the application to come forward and follow the same process: line up on the west side of the room, come forward, state your name and address, express your views to the board, and then let the next person speak until everyone who's against the application has had the opportunity to speak. Then those who aren't sure if they're in favor of the application or opposed to the application but want to talk to us about it or about something else, you can come up, speak into the microphone, tell us your name and address, make whatever comments you have to make, and then we'll give the applicant a chance to come back up and address any points that were raised during the public input portion of the meeting. Once that's concluded, we'll close the case and move on to the next case on the agenda. Once we've finished all of the cases that are on the agenda, we will then take a break. The length of the break will be announced at the time we take it. After we come back from the break, we will then deliberate on each of the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda and for which the applicant or their representative remains present. So if the first applicant has left but the second applicant is still present, we would take the second case first and go through the docket in that order until we've exhausted all the applicants who have remained, and then we would go back to number one and follow through with whoever had left but was still on the agenda, on the determined. Once that process is completed, we'll then take care of any other matters that we have before us, and then we would be in adjournment. During the deliberative portion of the meeting, there is no public input permitted unless the board specifically requests it. During the public input portion of the meeting after the applicant's presentation, all comments should be directed to the board. There are no comments to be directed to the applicant, no comments to be directed to any other representatives of the applicant, no comments to be directed to any other speakers, either in favor, opposed, or just talking about it. All comments should be directed to the board. All right, having reviewed all of that, we'll now turn to the...oh, before we do begin, I did want to take one moment to just recognize the passing earlier in May of Dan Riley, who served as the attorney for our board for several years. He also served the town as the town councilman. Dan was a lawyer, well-respected in town. He was a colleague and close friend of mine, and he is and will be missed. And so without any further ado, we'll turn to the matters on our agenda.
ZB 1606-1, upon the matter of request by Jeff Thomas and Catherine Calicchio for an area variance to construct a detached garage exceeding maximum permitted square footage on premises 67 Sagamore Drive in R1 Residential District.
Hi, my name is Jeff Thomas. I live at 67 Sagamore Drive.
Kathy Calicchio, I also reside at 67 Sagamore.
You'd raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. I do.
Okay.
I do.
So you're seeking a variance?
An area variance for an accessory structure. Basically, it's a second garage. There's an existing garage on the property.
And if I recall correctly, you want to add a second structure, and you're going to end up with, is it five car spaces at your house, or four?
No, it'd be four.
Four.
There's an existing two-car garage.
And you're going to add another two-car garage.
Correct. The existing one is actually going to be torn down as part of an addition and relocated, but still attached to the house.
So what you want to have is a two-car garage attached to the house and a separate two-car structure on the property.
Yeah, I think, don't want to confuse you, we haven't submitted plans for the addition portion of anything yet. The area variance was just for a detached garage, which we wanted to build first so that anything else that's in the garage can also be put in there while the remaining structure is going to be built.
As I look at your application, I see that you're asking for a variance of 624 square feet for a 1,524 square foot garage.
Yeah.
Is that the detached structure, or does that include the two-car garage that's going to be attached to the house still?
The variance was supposed to be for a 30 by 30 detached garage.
So that would be 900 square feet.
Correct.
And the current garage is 624?
Sorry, I wasn't doing any math, sorry.
All right.
Okay. That would be the total square footage, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yes. Yeah, the new attached garage would still be the same size as the existing, or smaller.
And if I understand the letter that you sent to us, basically the reason for this is so that you essentially can conduct your business out of your home by having the things that you need in your business stored there instead of stored elsewhere. Is that fair to say?
Correct. That's how I had it previously until I had to remove my belongings from my property, so it's been in storage, I've been utilizing storage space for almost three years. I mean, I've always had my tools and equipment where I live.
Where was that, that you removed them from?
I'm sorry? I used to live in Hilton.
Oh, in Hilton, okay. I thought you were talking about someplace in Arundicuate, and I was like...
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
All right, okay.
Previous home.
All right.
No storage places in Arundicuate yet.
Hmm?
There's no storage places in Arundicuate yet. We also have a small boat that we'd like to, as part of it would be in the garage instead of in the yard.
I don't know what you mean by no storage spaces in Arundicuate.
Are there? I didn't know there was.
There's a storage place off of one of the roads, off of Ridge Road. There's storage at U-Haul on Ridge Road, and a second location at Ridge Road that we approved. There's storage places down off of Thomas Avenue, to name but a few.
Thomas, right?
I'm concerned about the volume of garage space. I mean, I'll be candid with you, and I think others will probably speak to this as well, but we haven't approved, that I can recall, a garage of this magnitude yet, and we cut down a proposal that someone had for a similar garage over on the bay a few months ago, and they didn't have any garage. And essentially what you're asking us to do is grant you a variance so that you can have a private storage facility on your property and not have to pay somebody else for it, right?
What do you mean by, well, it's my personal belongings, it's not...
Well, I understand that, but it's your business-related stuff. As I understand it, it's so that you can have your tools and equipment on the property, and you're a building and remodeling contractor, and you rent two storage units as well as exterior parking space for your second vehicle, which is used in your business, so this essentially is to store all your business things and enable you to run your business from your home.
Correct.
I'll let the other members of the board chime in if you'd like.
What is the schedule of you converting that garage space that's attached to the house to our living space?
That would be shortly after theoretical construction of the detached garage. This year, I mean, regardless, it would be this year anyway.
So when I stop over there, you are here at home, but look at you have a, basically, one-story garage that's sucking down, attached to your house, so at that extent, the expansion will be, what are you expanding in that space?
Where the existing garage is now, that's going to be full basement and a living room.
Okay.
And then above the living room as well will be a bedroom.
But not a garage. So basically, what you're asking to do is to build a two-car garage while you transition this space to living space?
No, attached off of the end of the living room would also be, basically, we're flip-flopping the way the structure is now. Well, where the garage is right now would be living room and a bedroom above it.
But no garage?
And the garage after that, yes. Attached garage.
Well, the garage is, according to the map that you provided us, the garage is going to be attached to the house and directly behind the house.
Correct.
So you'd pull the vehicles in behind the house, and immediately to your left is going to be a two-car garage, and then a little further down the yard is going to be another two-car garage.
Correct.
Okay. And then you're telling us that in the letter that you've got at least two, if not more, household members who are going to be driving at some point in the future and most likely have their own vehicles, which is going to create problems, and then I can see an application that, well, it would only be two more cars to join the two-car garage with the last two-car garage, and now we'll have a six-car garage so we can solve all the storing, the parking and storage issues that we now have because of so many people in the household. That's what you make reference to in your letter, right?
Are you saying six-car garage? I was just trying to...
Well, that's my concern. My concern from your letter is that, you know, you say that between the two of you, you have four vehicles, a tow-behind dump trailer. You have, you want to store all your tools, so you'd like a four-car garage to accommodate the four vehicles that you have now, right?
You mean the total of, is that what you mean?
I'm looking at your letter. Your letter says that between the two of you, you have four vehicles and a tow-behind dump trailer, right?
That's correct.
And you want four-car garage space to store all those vehicles.
Basically, the detached garage is for me, and when I was talking...
Right, for your business.
Right.
Which is two of the four vehicles that the two of you own, or are there two more vehicles besides that?
No, just two, correct.
So that's, you want this two-car garage now to store the four vehicles that you have now?
Yes, I mean, part of this is to try to clean up the way, we have, our lot on Sagamore is a very unusual lot. It's very large in terms of livable space. A lot of the Sagamore houses do not have the yard space that we do, so the detached garage, instead of having a large three-car garage at the back of the house offset, pushed back, to have the two, it's really, it's a very small two-car attached garage, and then the two-car garage further behind it, instead of having a long three-car, good-sized three-car garage across the back of the house. This would eliminate any other, again, to clean up the yard, to not have two cars out in the driveway, to not have tools out, and again, with kids, you have bikes. And the placement of this second garage is not right on top. It's actually in a, there's a low hill that goes down that we're going to push it, tuck it back in there. It won't be viewable from the road. It's not, it's not in usable space right now. It's not in my neighbor's line of view. Again, it's tucked in there. It sounds much bigger than it really truly is when you look at, I don't know how many of you have actually been to the lot itself, but it would sit far back, and we strategically placed the garage where we did to not interfere with the line of the backyard or the view of the woods.
I guess I have a question. At the end of all your constructions, your renovations, how many car garages will you end up, what's the net car garage? Is it just a two-car garage in the back, and that's it?
No.
A two-car garage attached to the house. And a two-car detached garage.
Okay, so you are keeping a two-car garage attached to the house, because you said earlier that you're converting that to livable space.
We hope to expand, again, we're going to add on to the house. The garage needs replacing that's currently there, and it's part of the way it was built, like many houses on Sagamore, it's down, so water literally goes into the garage, so we're going to build it up, and with it, again, if you're going to put that much work into the house and build it up, we thought we'd add some square footage and some value to the back of the house. That's actually typical, there's a joke on our street called the Sagamore addition. Most of the houses there actually have that back end placed on it. So again, if you're going to remove the attached garage, why not add some square footage and some value to the home in Arundicuate?
If I could ask the town a question, just based on the calculations on this application, if I understand this correctly, the request for 1,524 square feet, that includes the 30 by 30, 900-square-foot additional garage and the existing garage, so altogether, the existing garage plus the new garage equals 1,524 square feet.
Correct. That's how it was calculated, based on the measurements provided for the attached, excuse me, the attached garage dimensions plus the proposed 30 by 30 detached garage.
So the current garage is 24 by 26?
Correct.
Did I understand that correctly? All right, thank you.
Hopefully my math is right.
You indicated you have a boat as well?
Yes.
And that'll be parked in one of the garage spaces?
That would be a goal, absolutely, rather than having it out.
And you have a tow-behind trailer of some type?
On occasion.
Yeah, most of the time it's somewhere else.
And when it's not somewhere else, where will it be?
Hopefully in one of the garage stalls.
All right, so now I'm a little confused over just how many vehicles you have altogether.
Two cars. I have a van and a truck. She has two cars.
Plus a boat and a dump trailer.
Correct.
Comes to six that you hope to have in garage space.
Not at all times. I mean, I haven't had a functional garage on that street, unfortunately, in about five years, so sometimes there's a car, possibly another out.
Are you asking if, I know I won't be able to park all my vehicles at the same time in a garage.
Well, that would be correct if you're going to have four spots and you've got six vehicles, yeah.
I don't have any questions, but I'll just make a comment that I made to other applicants before. The fact that you own a lot of stuff does not show any unique characteristics of the property or anything that is not self-created to suggest that you need this variance for anything other than the fact that you have a lot of stuff. I'm just making that observation. I'm making it because people are watching on TV. Other people will be applying, so I'm just putting it out there.
The new detached garage, is that going to be the same size you have now?
It's the proposed detached garage is...
Not detached, attached.
Attached, yes.
We're looking at square footage existing, so I want to know what your plans are.
Well, as I look at this, your drawing showing the new garage is really not to scale. It's kind of like a box on the paper. It's hard to tell in relationship to the rest of the, to the rest of the house and the driveway and everything else, but it's probably pretty close. And I guess what my take is, I don't really particularly have a problem with this. I mean, you need, you have a lot of stuff, and you want to store it, but the thing that I like about it is that you have the room. You're not going to put this right next door to your neighbor's fence and...
Land-wise?
I mean, you have space.
I know what you mean.
I think that's kind of critical in this area. Just an observation.
We're also very committed to maintaining the integrity of the home as we have on the inside, that any renovations we've had is to restore it back to its original 1920s feel, so I trust that whatever is put up will match the design and the federal colonial look of the home.
Any other questions from the board? Any other comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? I'm sorry, was there anything else you wanted to say? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? Would anyone like to talk to us about the application? We'll close the hearing with respect to that matter and move on to the next case on the agenda.
ZB 1606-2, upon the matter of request by Matthew and Erin Richter for an area variance to install front and side yard fencing on a corner lot with non-conforming fence type and exceeding maximum permitted height and linear footage on premises 20 Hearthstone Lane in an R1 Residential District.
My name's Erin Richter, and I live at 20 Hearthstone Lane.
You raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Oh, do I speak first?
You're the applicant.
I'm sorry.
So explain to us what your, the way this works is the applicant should explain to us what they're looking for in terms of a variance and why they feel that they've satisfied the requirements for the variance that you're seeking. And for an area variance, it would be, the standard is a practical hardship, and that would include addressing issues such as what effect it might have on the character of the neighborhood, whether there's any environmental concerns, whether it's a self-created hardship, and explaining what the need for the variance is with respect to the property itself.
Okay. So we're looking to put in a fence in what would be considered our front yard, but it looks more like our side yard. I submitted pictures of our property, and we'd like to fence what we use as our side yard in the same manner of a loud side yard. We've talked with all our neighbors, and nobody had any objections to us fencing that, and they would prefer that we fenced that side of the yard as opposed to what visually is our front yard would be appealing to any of the neighbors in the area.
I do want to bring to your attention that we were advised that Mr. Schindler, who's one of your neighbors, who called and said he wasn't able to attend the meeting tonight, but he was in favor of the application when he spoke to you, but he's now opposed to the application and feels that installation, the fencing, will change the character of the whole neighborhood. That's his message, so I just wanted to make you aware of that because when you referenced that you spoke to all the neighbors, he had a change of heart.
Okay.
Which is also why he's in the hospital, I guess.
No.
Heart surgery, yes.
Yes, I recently have spoken with his family. I didn't realize that he had changed his mind since he did just come back from the hospital just a couple days ago. I wish he'd spoken to me. Like I said, though, if we fence in what we are legally allowed to, which is visually our front yard to the rest of the neighbors, I don't think it would be, I don't think he'd appreciate having a fence in his, from his front yard view either. We have three young children, a dog, and we'd really appreciate to be able to allow them to use more usable yard space. I'm home alone a lot. My husband travels for work. He's out at sea for about three months of the, three months of the year at a time, so just the fact that I can say, okay, the kids are in the backyard, they're safe, it's not an issue, is, it would be nice. Other than that, we're not looking to put in a huge giant fence. We want to have a four-foot fence to the back corner of our house, and then a slow gradual increase to match the backyard fence that is already existing behind us.
And what height is that?
It's about five and a half feet.
Okay.
There's a large rhododendron bush that we plan to also leave where it is and have the fence run through so that it wouldn't be visual to any neighbors. The bush is probably 10 feet tall, and you wouldn't see the fence at all, so it wouldn't obstruct anybody's view of the road or anything.
If I could ask a question, looking at your diagram, if you're standing on Hillhurst, and you're looking at your house.
On Hillhurst, yes.
If I understand this correctly, from the corner of the house, you want the fence to be four feet.
Yes.
And then at the back corner of the house, you want it to slowly increase to five feet?
Yes.
All right. Now, if you're standing on Hillhurst, and you're not you, you're someone else, and you're looking at that, would you have any problem, you know, just for aesthetics, if it were four feet all along, do you need that extra foot?
We would prefer to have that extra slow incline, just mostly so it's going to come up and not be a, like, sudden jump to the next height.
Okay, and it looks...
But also...
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
For a small amount of privacy living on the corner, it would be nice to have a little bit of privacy into our backyard, but...
So you want it to increase one foot over a span of 30 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's, on top of it, it's going to be a scalloped fence, so at the four-foot section, it's only going to be like three and a half feet really.
Okay.
And then it's gonna...
So the five slash five and a half means five and a half posts, five in the middle?
Yes.
Okay.
That's along the very back, though.
Along with your packet, you took a picture of the fence that is along the back driveway of the St. Thomas Church property?
I did.
And you're saying that your fence is going to be that fence?
The similar style, yes.
Similar style, scalloped.
Scalloped, yes.
And then that fence also gradually goes up...
It does.
Toward the back. So it's just a reference. Does the person behind you, the one that would be directly...
Yeah, on Hillhurst?
Yes.
Yeah, we've spoken with him. He's completely in favor of it. I know his wife is going to be watching tonight, but yes, we've spoken with them a couple times about, you know, making sure that it stays in character with what they have and that we didn't want to disrupt any of their plantings or anything, so...
I was there this afternoon, and there's two large trees in that side yard going back toward that rhododendrum.
Yeah.
The fence is going to go in between those two...
In between the tree trees.
So they hang on...
So it would be a good 18 feet from the property line.
Right, from the road, right.
Yeah.
And they'll kind of hide it a little bit.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, my concern is the neighbor, right here, the one that objects all of a sudden.
Yes.
When I look at these pictures... When I look at these pictures and I look at the style of fence and I look at the dimensions of it, I don't really agree that such a thing would change the entire character of the neighborhood. So I'm not, I'm not buying into that part of it.
Okay.
So, you know, I don't think that's that big of a deal.
Okay, I also don't think it's going to visually affect him. He lives directly in front of us. To be, for him to see it, he'd have to go out into his side yard to see it, so it's not going to affect his view from, from his house.
Where does he live in relation to your house?
He lives directly across the road from us on...
Directly across the street?
On Hearthstone.
All right, so he also has a corner lot?
He also has a corner lot, yes.
Does his house face Hearthstone or...
It faces Hearthstone as well.
Okay.
Does this person or anybody offer suggestions to maintain the safety of your kids and that type of thing if we didn't approve this?
Yes.
I mean, what would be the alternative?
I don't think he's coming over to babysit.
Well, I mean, if somebody wants to say, I don't want you to do that just because they don't want you to do that, period, they're doing it for a reason, as I understand it.
I would like it for...
Yeah, it's a safety thing and it's a little privacy thing, and it's also, my opinion, looks all right. It looks fine.
Well, I think also the style of the fence helps.
I'm not putting up a giant plastic wall. I just want something simple.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone here who'd like to talk to us about corner lots, fences, escalating heights, anything like that? All right, seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to your case. Thank you.
Thank you.
And move on to the next matter on our agenda.
CB 1606-3, upon the matter request by Terrence O'Reilly for an area variance to replace an existing shed exceeding maximum permitted lot coverage on premises 107 Vinyl Avenue in an R2 residential district.
Yes, my name's Terry O'Reilly. I reside at 107 Vinyl Avenue. I'm here to request a variance on the, my existing...
Mr. O'Reilly, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Again, I'm here to request a variance on my property. I would like to replace an existing shed that I had built there. Prior to that, I applied for a permit, learning that the town code for buildings, the total area of principal building and excess buildings such as a shed cannot exceed 25% of the lot area. At present, my lot is 100 by 45, which is 4,500 square feet. 25% of that is 1125. My existing house is 48.9 times 34, which is 1662.6 square feet, and my shed that was there was eight feet by 10, which is 80 feet, square feet, which is a total of 1742.6 square feet, which comes out to 39% of the total area. The shed that I would like to replace is going to be nine by nine by nine by five by 11.8 in height, which would bring the total area up to 39.1% of the total area. Meeting the five requirements for consideration, the shed is going to be, I included in my package a picture of the shed that I'm looking to put, except it won't have the flower boxes and the door itself is going to be a solid door.
So if I, if I could ask, just for clarification, when you bought your property in 1979, there was a shed on it that was 80 square feet, correct?
Yes.
And now you want to replace that with a shed that is...
Just like...
14 square feet larger. So instead of eight by 10?
Yeah.
It's 9.9 by 9.5.
Right.
So you want pretty much the exact same thing?
Exactly.
Just 14 square feet.
Right, but what happened was I was over the allotted 25% with the house and everything and...
And that's the way you bought it?
Yeah.
It's been that way since '79, which is before I was even around?
Exactly.
All right.
Sure, rub it in.
Now you're bragging.
Bragging.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So to continue, meeting with the five requirements, the shed is not going to hem it to the neighborhood in any way. Actually, I'll give my house character because the shed is going to be light gray in color, which is my house, with white trim, which my house is also. And then it will give the neighborhood a warm and friendly feeling instead of the old metal shed I had. Because at the present time, I am now storing my snow blower, my lawnmower, my grill, and all my yard tools in my garage, which means I can't put my car in my garage. And so basically, that's what I'm here for.
Have you asked any of your neighbors if they had any concerns over this project?
Yes, I have. I've asked both neighbors on each side of me and in back, and there's no problem whatsoever because of the existing shed that I had there, and I've shown them pictures, and this one's a far better than what I had.
Thank you. And the shed's going to go right in that, here for...
Yeah.
Where the outline is on the ground?
Yeah, and a copy of my map is basically where I'm going to be putting it, right behind the house.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I was just going to say, is that where the shed previously was?
No, actually, the shed originally was back in the far corner there, to the left.
Okay.
And the land had sloped down, and so I had to build the land back up there.
Having gone back there and seen the layout, the piece of property, it's so small that you almost can't do anything without exceeding maximum coverage, you know? And all the other houses fall into that same category. Now, I didn't go around to everybody's shed with my tape measure, but I would bet money that a lot of those sheds fit right into the kind of thing that you're asking for. So there's definitely no change to the neighborhood here. So I don't, I can't see what anybody would object. And moving it over, it's only a couple of feet, right, from where it was before?
Yeah, basically.
That's no biggie.
I'm just curious about one, one thing. The 9.9 feet instead of 10, is that the dimensions of the lumber that they block off 10th?
Well, no.
A two-by-four, maybe, is it two-by-four?
The reason I've gone there is basically economics, because I can get the maximum out of a two-by-four by 10, okay?
Okay.
And if I, so I'm maximizing every inch I can get out of...
All right, so it's because the lumber isn't what it really is.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who wants to talk about sheds and maximum development? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to the next matter on our agenda.
CB 1606-4, upon the matter request by Brittany and Kristen Stratton for an area variance to install a four-foot-high chain link fence, front yard fence, on a corner lot with non-conforming fence type and exceeding maximum permitted height and linear footage on premises 116 Highwood Drive in an R1 residential district. I think the fence type changed, so...
Yes, I did submit an amendment. My name is Kristen Stratton. I live at 116 Highwood Road.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And the change in the fence was to what?
The change in the fence, actually, you should have in front of you a new letter of intent, and there's a picture directly on it. It's going to be a 45-inch-tall metal, kind of a, you know, open concept fence with a small pet barrier on the bottom of it. We decided it would be a lot nicer looking than the chain link fence for our neighbors, and they agreed as well.
Oh, the May 23rd letter?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so you'll have in front of you a map as well. The highlighted area that is yellow, it says Lot 177 on the south-facing area of our yard. Actually, much like the other application, that is considered our front yard, however, it is really a side yard when looking at the front of the house. We're looking to fence that in, make it look a little bit nicer, maybe a little bit more space for our dogs, and get the maximum utilization of our yard. Right now, the backyard and the side yard, so the north side of our yard and also the west side of our yard are actually fenced in already. We're going to improve those two areas to be black as well and match the, hopefully, you know, the fencing that we're going to install. We do have a petition included with our application. All of the neighbors on Grantham and Highwood that would be directly affected by the view of this fence have approved it. So overall, we feel that it would really add to the aesthetics of the property itself and give us a little bit of security to our home. You know, it'll have two gates, it'll give our dogs a bit more room to run, and give us a little bit more yard space for summer months.
If I'm looking at this correctly, the, you're pretty much fencing in the whole lot.
Correct.
Even the, even the very, what would be the front of your house?
Correct.
You're fencing in that area also.
Right. The fence itself is pretty open concept as far as, you know, the structure of it. You can see directly through it. It's not very high. It's black material, so it's not going to be, you know, visually setting to anyone. Everybody really likes the idea that it's going to be a darker color. It's, you know, a decorative fencing, really, when you're looking at it. Everybody likes the idea of that a lot more than a security fence or any kind of barricade fence, which we're not really interested in. We're just looking for something to be able to keep the dogs in the yard.
So the fence along the back, is it going to be, that's a chain link currently?
Correct.
That's going to stay chain link? You're going to black it in to match or something?
Yeah, the previous owners of our home actually spray painted it lime green. We are going to paint that back to a black Rust-Oleum color to match the fence that we would like to install. And actually, if you look at the map, the green highlighted portion, there is an existing white picket fence there. It is a terrible structure. The previous owner installed it themselves and built it from scratch, and it's, it's not even very safe or appealing at all, so we're going to take that down and replace it with the black decorative fencing that we're applying for, for the variance as well. So it's going to look, overall, a lot more cohesive and a lot nicer for our neighbors as well as us.
Now, along that area, there's no sidewalk, so there's, you're riding your bicycle along the street?
There is a sidewalk on that area, actually.
I apologize for not going out there to look at this.
Oh, that's quite all right. Yeah, there is, there is a sidewalk there, and we would, you know, install the structure three feet back from the sidewalk as permitted. We're just looking for a variance on the linear footage, really.
I like the style of the fence. The concern I have on fences like that along a sidewalk are people, children, bicyclists tripping and falling against your fence with the prongs at the top.
Okay.
I do know, and we've approved them around the town, there's a bunch of different ones that have just a flat stock at the top.
Mm-hmm.
And some of them have a flat stock with a point underneath them, but if you were to fall against it, my concern is somebody's going to poke themselves.
Having seen this in person, I feel that those prongs that you're seeing at the top are definitely a lot more blunt than they look in the photo, and I do feel that it's, it's tall enough that I don't know that anybody could really fall onto it necessarily, especially if it's three feet back from the sidewalk. And also, our...
Again, somebody, an adult riding a bicycle or something, again, I like the idea of the fence, I like the decorative look of the fence. I go, I'm not thrilled with the prongs.
I guess our hope is really to kind of keep people and the dogs away from each other, hence the fence.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, if, if there's a different style that would appeal to the board a little bit more, if you want a flat top, you know, we're willing to talk about changing the actual style of the fence as long as, you know, we can have the height and the linear foot requirements. We would be open to changing the actual style of the fence if that's upsetting.
And then the last question that I have is that highlighted area in blue, which is directly out front of the house?
Yes.
Is that something, if everything else was approved the way you wanted, is that something that you could live without?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to address that, looking at the property, the highlighted portion in blue, I think would, would add character to the house, would not detract character from the neighborhood, even though that's the only fence, because the chain link fence, two houses to the south...
Correct.
Of where you live, but it actually would make the, look more cohesive with what you're trying to do.
I mean, again, I, just a question.
If I can get clarification, the part that's in blue here that is in the actual front of your house, by the driveway, you don't need a variance for that, do you?
We don't.
Okay. The only thing you're asking about is the yellow...
Portion.
On the south of the property?
Correct.
Okay.
But, you know, we're just letting you know that if we are allowed to change the south side of the property, that all the fencing would match and look a lot nicer. So we don't actually need a variance for the blue.
Okay.
But we would like to make it all the same to make it look a lot nicer.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about corner lots, fencing, things like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next item on our agenda.
CB 1606-5, upon the matter request by Robert Palermo for an area variance to enclose an existing carport addition exceeding maximum permitted garage square footage and with on premises 738 Brown Road in an R2 residential district.
Hi, I'm Robert Palermo. I live at 738 Brown Road.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
I'm applying for area variance to enclose an existing carport that's going to exceed the maximum square footage. I'm pretty sure everybody's pretty aware what's going on with it so far.
I think we have some familiarity with it.
Pardon me?
I said, I think we have some familiarity with this.
Been there a couple times.
Yes. And the reason that you want to enclose the overhanging portion is to provide greater security for the things that are under there and to make the outdoor storage less visible and neater in appearance for your neighbors, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And I believe when this was on the agenda earlier this year, a number of your neighbors came and spoke in favor of it.
Yes, they did.
Thought it looked very nice.
Yes, sir.
Anything else that you'd like to bring to our attention with respect to this?
No, I mean, we pretty much talked, touched on it the last few meetings. You know, we went ahead and did what you asked of me, and pretty much just want to proceed with where we left off, I guess.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I think this is an interesting case. Mike, you were probably going to say something about this too, but...
Well, I just, in reference to the way this all came about, and I understand Mr. Palermo did his, did what he asked in reference to taking it apart, and I appreciate that, but I still don't like the way it was done in the first place, that it didn't follow the initial zoning requests that we approved way back when we built the structure, way back when you first put the structure up. It was built to be an open overhang, and again, that's my vote, and I, I feel that in closing it makes it look like a warehouse, and it's, you know, we're talking about large garages. This one definitely exceeds the overall allowable square footage, and in, in closing that particular side, it's, you know, not something that I, I will agree to. But again, it's, you know, that's why there's more than just me on the board. The fact that it was enclosed after the fact that it was originally approved, we just need to let the, you know, people in the town know that it's not acceptable, and again, I'm glad you took it apart, but it's not acceptable to just do things... to just do things without checking with the zoning codes and, and, um-
That was a mistake on my behalf, and I apologize for it, I was misled by people saying that they thought it was okay, and you're right, I should've just looked into it the proper way the first time.
And, and I would second what Mr. LaPerry said about appreciating the fact that you took it down, because, uh, that wasn't a mistake on your part, and that's been rectified, and now we're dealing it with it as a new application, as we indicated to you that we would.
Okay.
And I guess that having the overhanging part seemed like a good idea at the beginning, and doesn't seem like such a good idea after it was in play for a couple of years?
Well, just the amount of stuff that ended up collecting underneath there, between the vehicles, and I've got, like I say, uh, just a whole bunch of stuff, tires and ladders and stuff that just is kind of an eyesore in a way. And, uh, you know, the ladders and tires, um, like I said, there's a lot of foot traffic through the school, and I know it's a lot of people in, uh, in the medical building, parking lot, there's quite a few people that wander through there at different hours of the day and night, and, uh, just trying to secure it and just clean the property up, like I said, it just, um, I think it's, and my neighbors agree with me, they wholeheartedly like it better enclosed than open. It's just neater to look at, and-
Part of the conversation we had last time was, why not put a taller privacy fence around the back of the, back end of the house, uh, which would deter people being nosy, uh, as opposed to what was done?
You know, and at the same time, it, it also keeps the stuff out of the weather, so I just thought that was a better, for me, it just seems to be working out better than a fence would. It's a little bit neater also, but, um, you know, that's kinda where we're at with it right now.
Correct, if I'm wrong, putting a privacy fence on the back does not preclude observation from the road, correct? Houses will be-
You would be able to look down the driveway and see down there, unless we brought it over, basically enclosed the back, enclosed the garage with a fence, like you say, yeah, otherwise, yeah, you could still see back there if it was just along the property lines.
Right now, you, I mean, the garage that you have existing is what, thirty-two by thirty-two?
Correct.
And you can't get the other stuff in, in there? I mean, everybody has stuff.
I'm pretty much over, uh, I outgrew it already, you know, so, and my shed's filled to the top, uh, I just got a lot of stuff between lawn mowers, plowing stuff, uh, tires, you know, lawn tools, et cetera, et cetera. Snow plows, I'm hoping to get it all, all tucked in there, stuff's in the yard right now, pretty much, pretty exposed, pretty, uh, visible from the road anyways.
Again, kind of reiterating what Mr. Polino said early, or in reference to the amount of stuff that you have versus, um, you know, the town's obligation to have that type of a structure, um, in a residential spot.
It was a valid point, and, uh, like I say, I'm requesting this, I have a, a unique lot, as you all know, between the school and the doctors' offices, no real direct neighbors that it's offensive to, and like I say, you've seen all the neighbors, really don't, they're all in favor of it anyhow, so, like I said, the yard's very unique, and I was hoping you'd, would have a little consideration towards it, I guess.
Let me throw out a hypothetical. Suppose that we approve your request, and we allow you to re-enclose this open portion, and I suspect that over the next, you know, couple of years, you're going to replace some of that, and what you replace it with might be bigger, or you might get another snow plower, you might get another snow blower, or you might get another car or something like that, that doesn't fit in the now expanded garage. What's your plan at that point?
Well, there's really none, there isn't one, I mean, we'd have to add on to the building, and I'm pretty sure you guys aren't gonna permit that.
Well, that would be my concern, yes, that we'd be back here in a few years to have another expansion.
Well, I definitely won't be doing without your approval.
I'm pretty sure of that, too.
I don't see that happening, like I said, there's really no room to really do much more, I mean, it's not the biggest yard in the, you know, in the, in the town, otherwise, so.
I mean, there's also a large shed that's in this, on the same property. It's just, it's just, in my opinion, it's overkill.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone here who'd like to just talk about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. And I, as I noted earlier, I do recall that there were several of your neighbors, including the, the gentleman who lived right across the street from you, uh, who spoke in favor of it when it was here previously, and we're not, we're not unmindful of that as well.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
DB sixteen oh six dash six, upon request by Park Real Estate Management LLC for an area variance to maintain a shared driveway with less than required setback on premises two oh two and two oh four Totem Trail in an RR rural residential district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Charles Janessi, I'm an attorney representing Mr. Frank Romeo and Stacy Romeo, the owners of two oh two, two oh four Totem Trail. Would you like me to be sworn in, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I believe that in the past, we've historically exempted attorneys since you're officers of the court, and will rely on the fact that you're not going to misrepresent any, and I'll use this as an explanation point for those who might be in the audience and watching, that the requirement for swearing in the applicant originated several years ago, when we had an applicant who presented a, a great deal of information to us in support of what was a controversial application. We relied upon the information that the gentleman had provided to us and granted the variance, and then, over the next month or so, began to learn that a lot of the information that had been related to us was in fact misstated, or misrepresented, or perhaps even false. And we found that we had no existing remedy under the law, because it was merely a presentation to a board, and it was not anything that was sworn to or filed. So the reason that we now swear the applicant, and a few months after that, we did have an application to revoke what we'd done, and we did it. And so the reason that we now swear the applicant is so that in the event that information is misrepresented to us, and we rely upon information that is misrepresented to us, there is an opportunity for civil and/or criminal prosecution related to that, based upon misrepresentation or false statement. So that's why we swear the applicant. Again, as I said, other attorneys that have appeared in front of us, we have not had them swear, because you are an officer of the court, and there's alternative remedies were that to be a problem, uh, there's other ways of dealing with that.
Thank you, Mr. Henman.
You're welcome.
Mr. Henman, uh, we've been before this board before, in this matter, back in two thousand and eleven, April fourth, as a matter of fact, and we subsequently went before the planning board. At that time, we were seeking a variance to build a, uh, two-house subdivision on Totem Trail. That was, that variance was granted, we, the applicant in fact did build, or is in the process of building the second home right now. Uh, he received all the proper approvals from the planning board. At that time, the, uh, the plan did show for a shared driveway, and the plan that was submitted to this board and to the planning board, in fact, showed the shared driveway, and the shared driveway, when the subdivision was, or I should say, the site was developed, included a shared driveway between the two houses. The shared driveway was placed in, in two thousand and twelve, I believe, was the year, and one house was completed back in two thousand and thirteen, the second house is in the process of being completed now, and the driveway was paved in, I believe, the summer of two thousand and fifteen, which is perhaps why we're before this board today. The, the applicant has submitted the, um, the standard submission to the board, it, setting forth a D on page three of his application, he sets forth the factors and explains them, I'm not gonna go into great detail, they're already there. There are benefits to having a shared driveway, it is actually, uh, the inclination of many jurisdictions, and I presume sometimes in the town of Veronicote, in any event, that shared driveways be in place, fewer curb cuts, less impervious service, uh, and other matters, it's generally both a safety and a maintenance factor. It increases the, the ability of the, the two parties to both maintain the property, to plow it, to keep it repaired, and keep it sealed properly. More importantly, this was always before the board. This is nothing that no one, that anyone was not unaware of at the time that Mr. Romeo first came before this board and the planning board back in two thousand and eleven. I do have submissions which I'll give to the board. One shows the expense, which I asked Mr. Romeo to, to work up, as to what it would cost if he was not permitted to maintain the variance, which I would add, by the way, the variance is a very minor, very small variance, we're only talking two feet of each of the properties. We're not talking a large, it's minimal, and we're talking about, basically, we're talking about a driveway, we're not talking about structures, we're not talking about the impinging upon any other property, or any, anybody else's property, or any other areas within the subdivision. My understanding is that some people have objected, saying it was going to change the character of the neighborhood. I would point out that simply stating that as a conclusion, it's not evidence, and there's been no evidence, that I'm aware of, showing that the shared driveway that is in place at the residence of, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Romeo and his sister, uh, have changed the health, safety, or welfare of the neighborhood or the community, or that would be otherwise I would also advise that the, the two parties, the two owners of the two premises have entered into a, an easement agreement between the two properties, the easement is in effect now, will continue in effect, and that the persons who have, who would subsequently own the properties would also have the, the effect and the benefit of the, of the shared driveway agreement.
Has that been recorded?
Yes, it has been, it's been, it was recorded in two thousand and twelve.
Do we have a copy of that in any of the materials?
Yes, in the application.
In the bound materials, okay.
Tab six.
Tab six, okay, thank you.
I could approach-
I did see, it, it's in tab six of the bound materials that we were given. It's been a while since I'd looked at it, I'm sorry.
I, I guess I just have one question.
Sure.
I remember when this came before the board.
Yes.
And it was contentious then, it's gonna be contentious now. The point that this plan has always been considered, this joined driveway that does not have planting space in between, I guess my question is, if this was al- always considered, why didn't we request, or why didn't the applicant request a variance on this issue back then?
Well, the only I can state is that, that we appeared here because of what the town of Veronicote requested Mr. Romeo to, to ask for. He requested the variance that was, that the town told him was required. We subsequently went before the planning board, which of course could've kicked this back to, uh, kick, kick the matter back to this board for further variances sought. I did in fact raise, and that's one of the things I'm going to submit to Mr. Henman, it's a letter I sent to, uh, Dan Orelli, um, back in June of two thousand and eleven, specifically addressing that issue. That issue was raised by the planning board at the planning board's workshop, we attended a workshop in June, subsequent to our meeting here, and it was raised at that time, and I wrote a letter to Mr. Orelli, uh, talking about that particular issue, and I'll be glad to give you a copy of the letter, which I have here.
Well, uh, in, in reference, what did the letter say? That you weren't gonna put the planter in the middle?
No, no, I just, I, I just-
All right, the, the letter that I've been, uh, provided, uh, it references in the, the third paragraph of the, uh, of the letter, it indicates that the application for variances by the same applicant for the same property, and substantially the same planned two-side-by-side homes with an adjoining driveway between them was approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, no setback variances were deemed required. However, when the applicant appeared at the planning board workshop on June thirteenth, a member of the town staff proffered a section of the town code which had not been brought to the applicant's attention in its prior appearance before the zoning board. That subsection requires that all driveways in RR, R1, R2, and R3 residential districts in the town, this being in RR, must be at least eight feet in width and have a two-foot minimum from the adjoining lot lines. He expresses concerns with the timeliness and fairness of the requirement, notes that Mr. Romeo was willing to comply with the code, however, he presented an extensive, detailed, and comprehensive application before the zoning board on April fourth, um, incurred time and expense in relation to the presentations. The variances sought and granted were those required by the town's officials to proceed. Now the officials are raising the possibility of another variance being sought if the plat as submitted is to be approved. Everyone believed that the area variances for area width and depth, having been granted, and the lot size variance to permit the subdivision having been granted, there were no further variances required. The present submissions did not stint on detail, the town had an obligation to inform him of all portions of the zoning code that needed varying, the joint driveway has been part of every drawing and representation submitted. The, there was a drawing that was attached at some point that showed the planter in the driveway.
Yeah, I, I just only saw that after the fact, yes, you're right.
Right, and, and I believe that it, it's actually the letter from some people in opposition that indicate that that addition was put in there, um, in response to the planning board's concerns following our meeting. So I guess, um, my question would be, was the planter in the, or the dividing of the driveway by this planter, was that included in the, uh, plan that was submitted to us when we approved the variances, or was it added later on?
By, to my recollection, it was not part of the, of the plan that was submitted to you, because I, I remember asking Mr. Romeo about, when I heard about this last year, which was the first time, I said, I don't recall that that happened, I had not seen the, uh, that particular drawing with the planter. Uh, Mr. Romeo's here, I guess he can answer that particular question, I don't recall that that was in fact the case.
That is the plan that the planning board saw.
Back in two thousand and eleven?
Yeah, well, before it came in front of us about splitting the two, splitting it into two parcels. So the planning board approved what looks to be your map with the planter.
Well, I know that, I know that map is the one that was ultimately signed, that's correct.
Right, so, I, I-
But I don't recall that, to be honest, becoming an issue, Mr. LaPerry, at the time.
Well, it might not have been an issue for us at that time, but it, it, it was put in the original plans. The neighbors seemed adamant that, they didn't like the whole idea in the first place, we, we approved the breaking up of the two lots. My thing is, and, and I guess I'm just appealing to, um, Mr. Romeo and his sister as, as good neighbors, why not put the planter down the middle to make everybody happy? And, and, and because it was there in the design in the first place, what the heck? I mean, it, it's, to me, I don't, you know, I, I know he's a developer, and I know he does a lot of good work in our town, but, um, there's obviously a lot of people, based on our, um, number of people here tonight, uh, that aren't in favor of that, why not? Is it that big of a deal, you know, for him, for the family, to have a planter down the middle?
It would cost, based on work estimate that I asked Mr. Romeo to, to prepare, it would cost over fourteen thousand dollars to do that right now. The other factor-
And if it was done the way it should've been done, based on your own plan in the first place, that probably wouldn't have had it-
Well, the, the fact is, I'm, I'm not denying that he did what he did, but the fact of the matter is, is that the driveway was not put in for a couple of years after the plan, that, uh, there was obviously no objection raised until, I'd say relatively recently.
You know, again, I, I think- You know, again, I think, as far as the neighborhood, there, you know, there's quite a few people that have signed that aren't happy about it.
This is a question that I have, just based on the letter that you submitted. So it seems that in 2011, the applicants were aware that there was some issue with the driveway.
Correct. Well, it was brought up by the pla, yes, that's correct.
So, in 2011, had the driveway been installed?
No.
So, you're coming to us now, five years later, after the driveway's been installed, to resolve an issue that was raised in 2011? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
All right. I mean, it's unfortunate, but a lot of times we have people come to us who ask for forgiveness as opposed to permission, and it's, it's a very difficult thing for us...
I understand.
...to do that, because we have 50,000 residents in this town.
But, Mr. Polino, the thing is that nobody had requested them to vary at that time.
Nobody was in your initial plan of how it was supposed to be built. So I would assume everybody figured it was going to be built properly, and then...
Well, and that, I guess, is where my question comes in, because if I'm understanding correctly, a plan was submitted to us requesting variances, and that plan included a joint driveway between the two properties without a planter.
That's my recollection of the plan, yes. I don't, I didn't have that, I don't have that original plan with me.
Right. Because it, from everything that's been presented, both by those who are opposed to the variance now, and in the submissions from the applicant, it appears to me that that planter idea was added after the planning board looked at the plan, after we, they met in...
June.
June.
June 27th, 2011.
Right. And we met in April and granted the variance, correct? Is that what it...
That's correct.
All right. And then the map that shows the planter in it is dated May, which I believe was after a workshop with the planning board, and that was brought up, and so the planter was added to the plan in May.
It must have been added after the, after the final plan was submitted and approved by the planning board. That's correct. I do not, again, I'm...
So, so what I'm getting at is that when it was in front of us, there wasn't any reference to a planter, and there wasn't an issue about whether or not it violated any setback and required a variance.
Right. I would not be here if that was not the case, that's correct.
Right. So then the planning board raised the issue, and the planter was added to the plan.
The planning board raised it at a workshop in June, correct.
And that's the plan that was signed off on?
That was the plan that was signed off on, but I cannot, I cannot honestly state that I recall that that was the plan that was submitted to the planning board at the time. That might have been handled afterwards. It was not in the minutes of the planning board, there was no mention of it in the minutes of the planning board.
I'm looking at the, I guess it's tab three on your submission that shows a map, and the map is dated 5/19/11, and it has all the signatures of the approvals of the director of planning and zoning.
With a highlight, with a highlighted, yes.
Yes. And has the planter on it. So I guess the question that I have, in line with what Mr. Polino was asking, is, when the driveway was put in, why wasn't either the planter included, or a request made to dispense with the planter at that time?
Can't answer that.
Okay.
Just as we were talking...
Mr. Romeo can answer that, if you please.
All right. You want to swear me in? Please. As you swear, affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We did come here in 2011, and we did get a number of variances. We did not need a variance at the time, we thought, before the driveway. At the time, the town planner, Larry Hindman...
Henninger.
Henninger. There we go. He brought it up at a workshop meeting subsequent to us, at a planning board meeting, workshop subsequent to us receiving these zoning variances. Went to the next meeting, and we were under the gun a little bit to get this project started. He said, "Don't worry about it, you can go back to the zoning board and get that variance if you want it," because we just wanted to get this project moving during that summer. Well, we kind of forgot about it until recently, so we're back here looking for that variance. It's a simple explanation. Not hidden. It's right on there. We didn't try and hide it. We got it in there, in the book, tabbed up, and orange and bright. Nobody's hiding anything here.
Well, my question, and again, you're a good developer in our town, and everybody applauds you for that, but knowing that a lot of the neighbors weren't happy about the idea, the way the two houses were set up and built and that, and that they're not happy about the driveway, wouldn't it help as far as being a little neighborly and appease the people that think it would look prettier? Because it is a big, wide driveway.
It is. And it works really well.
I bet it does. But I mean...
Lots of people, lots of family, lots of cars down there.
Right.
Works really well.
I mean, you know, some type of planter...
And that's what, that's what we always wanted, was that driveway.
Some type of planter, even one that, you know, maybe isn't as long as the one that was in the plan, but out toward the street, you know, 25 feet back from the street or something. Something that makes it look a little less parking lot-ish.
Well, this board certainly has the power to do that, to tell us to do that.
Well, but we kind of hope that...
You could give us, you could give us partial relief if you want. I don't have to tell you that. That's, that's what the law is.
Well, again, hoping that...
I mean, I can't change my application in the middle of a meeting here, but we all know what you can do.
All right. On the, on the point, on the point raised about what was before the board, the zoning board originally, and the drafting of the map that may or may not, that may have been after the point, I mean, I remember this meeting very clearly when we, when we addressed this. And it was said during the meeting, that the only issue before the planning, the zoning board, was one variance, subdividing the lot. That was it. You mentioned variances in the plural, that's not, I don't believe that was accurate. We talked about one thing, subdividing the lot, and we expressly said, what the design looks like and conformance with all other setbacks and requirements is something for the planning board to handle. I am, I'm pretty certain that we said that specifically in relation to this project, that all we're talking about, and we said that for the benefit of some of the residents who are complaining about the size of the house, and this, that, and the other thing, we said, "Our job as the board is to just divide it. That's all that we're being asked to do. We're not looking at any fences, or driveways, or anything else, we're just looking to divide it." So when you said a minute ago that you got a lot of variances from the zoning board, was there anything that I'm...
Well, I believe we got a front setback variance.
You have, you have a front setback variance?
And I believe, and I believe we got a variance for lot sizes when we subdivided it.
I think it was lot sizes. We got something for the setbacks, though?
I believe so. I didn't come prepared to speak about that, but we could. But you know, it's interesting, you talk about the lot sizes and the setback variances, and how unique they are to these two parcels, when all of Totem Trail was developed under Section 281 of the cluster development, where, under the rural residential section, I counted 180 lots, and 64% of them are nonconforming. So I don't think it's fair to say that this property, or these properties, are unique, when the majority of the properties in this zone, which is only in that area that we commonly call the flats or the Genesee flats, it's the only place where there's rural residential, and 64% of those lots are nonconforming. So it's not really that I should be pointed out and called out that we're doing something that's so abnormal here.
So again, the issues before the board the last time was just to subdivide the lot?
And we did submit that previously, and I do have all of that information, if you're really interested in it.
Mr. Genesee, Mr. Romeo, could I ask you about tab six, if you're submittal?
Sure.
That common driveway easement that's recorded?
Yes.
That was seven or eight months after the planning board approval. That provides for a shared area 28 feet in width. That would seem to me to include the four-foot planting strip. Is that accurate? Is that, is that what the plan was when this document was prepared and recorded?
Well, this, this document was submitted to the town for their review, and we, we received approval from it, and we recorded it. I mean, the intent was to share both of those driveways with both parties.
Okay. Yeah, it would, it would seem to me that if each driveway's going to be 12 feet in width, and there was a four-foot planting area proposed, that would be consistent with the 28-foot shared area that's in this document.
That would, that would be correct. It's running along with what was approved and what we wanted to get approved at the time.
Okay.
So, yes, we're back here looking for relief for this.
So in layman's terms, you don't really want the divider?
No. That's correct.
Okay. And it makes sense, because it's more economical to plow it, to maintain it, to finish it off?
Finish it off, get around, there's...
Well...
I'm failing to see how this, not putting in this divider is affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the community, how it's going to change the rotation of the earth by not putting it in.
I suspect that we're going to hear that shortly.
I know. And we'll probably have some interesting comments.
And then we're going to give you a chance to come back up and reply.
I understand the process, Mr. Chairman.
I'm also interested in hearing that as well, so...
So I was just answering Mr. Thomas's...
Well, I understand that. What I was going to say is perhaps...
I'm, I'm ready, I'm ready to listen.
I was going to say, perhaps we could address that more effectively after we hear what the...
Any more, any more questions? Before we...
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
I think I understood one of you to say that to do this work today would cost $14,000. Is that correct?
I submitted it.
Okay.
Oh, here.
What would it have cost at the time when the driveway was put in initially, had it been done that way?
I don't know. Less.
A lot less?
Somewhat less, I presume.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's...
Thank you.
The economics really don't come into play under an area variance anymore.
Yeah, I'm just curious, when I look at it.
The law has changed, we don't have to prove that. But, anyway, let's move on.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here to speak against the application?
Chairman, you do have a letter of one, one of the neighbors that has no issue with the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Before we get to those, there is a letter that we did receive from Paul Surley, who resides at 205 Totem Trail, who is unable to attend tonight, who indicates that he has no objection to the plan to maintain the driveway as is without any divider. He says it looks fine today, and if somehow needed in the future, a divider could be added later. So that would, thank you for pointing that out, that's more appropriately in the, in support of the application. Now we'll turn...
Excuse me, Chairman, there's another letter that's being circulated as well, to add to the record.
Okay, and this is a letter from Ashley Perizek, I might not be pronouncing that correctly, who supports the driveway as is without a separation down the middle, and she indicates that she lives directly across the street. And she believes that it's in the best interest of the children who often play in the driveway, for safety reasons, to keep the driveway as is. Oh, that's Ashley Barioli from 201 Totem Trail. So those comments were received in support of the application. And now we'll turn to those who wish to speak in opposition to the application.
Hi, I'm Roseanne Lopa, and I live at 210 Totem Trail. I'm asking the zoning board not to approve the variance request. The applicant is requesting to maintain a shared driveway. First of all, it's not an existing shared driveway, because as the town told me on several occasions, it's still an unfinished site. 202 has not moved in yet, and the site plan has not been completed. In April 2001, oh, 2011, the applicant came before the zoning board to split the RR property into two lots, with less than minimum required square feet, minimum lot width, and minimum lot depth in the RR property zone. There was a proposed shared driveway on the original plan. Much discussion at the zoning board was about that shared driveway, as many of you probably recall. It was determined that the planning board would be the place to address the driveway. The application was approved to split the property by a four-to-three vote, a very close vote, and at least one member who voted yes, did so with the comfort that the driveway would be addressed with the planning board. In June 2011, the driveway was again an issue at the planning board meeting, and the applicant agreed to a four-foot wide planting to separate the driveways and conform to the town code. There was a petition at the planning meeting at that time from 22 residents representing 16 households on the Totem Trail cul-de-sac. The way you come into our street, you always have to go by this property. There's no way in or out, other than driving by the property. The site plan was submitted, and I have a copy if anybody really wants to look at it, was submitted by the applicant with the planting and approved planter in it, and approved by the planning board.
Is, just for reference sake, is that the site plan that's dated May 9th, 2011, in the lower right-hand corner? Or May 19th, 2011?
Lower right-hand corner.
This is drawing number C1 at the bottom of that block?
Um, I think so. It was approved dated 1/31/13. I don't know where the submission is. When I, when I asked for information from the town, this is the one they gave me as an approved site plan.
Can you pass that, hand that to Mr. Evans?
I don't know the coding on it, so...
Okay.
Okay? The construction of the site began and has been going on since 2002, and still isn't complete. I've continually contacted town, using the code violation process about the driveway, and have been repeatedly told by the town representatives, at this time, the site plan's not finished, and the site plan calls for four-foot planting that will be in line with town code. I was either told there was nothing that could be done until the site was finished, or I did not even receive a reply. In 2014 January, I met with Adam Bello to talk about the site. He indicated that it would be completed as the site plan that was approved. I followed up with him in April 2014 regarding the property. So there's been much discussing about shared driveways and saving green space, and a shared driveway is the new thing across the country. This doesn't really fall under the definition of shared driveway. There is a 10-foot driveway on either, there's 12 feet on either side of the property line. With the two-foot, with the two-foot setback, there is still a 10-foot driveway on each separate property, okay? That would be in line with town code. Approving for the additional variance does have an adverse effect on the character of the RR residential zone for single-family homes. The applicant, when they first applied in 2011, stated they wanted to build a family compound, and that's what they did. The homes do not blend with the existing neighborhood of single-family homes. The orientation of the house on 202 Totem Trail, facing into the other house, with the back of the house to Seneca, and the side of the house to Totem Trail, does, does make it look like a compound. And without the separation in the driveway, and the driveway is, as you said, very large, it looks like a compound, with the fence continuously all around the two houses. The applicants were well aware of the code and the opposition to the combined driveway. This is a self-imposed hardship. There is no practical reason why they can't put that planter in as planned and conform to the town code. It's self-created.
What fencing are you referring to?
They have a, well, look at the pictures I submitted. There is a wooden stockade fence that goes around the side and the back of both...
You're talking, if I understand you correctly...
Mm-hmm.
You're talking about the fencing that goes from what, under the town code, would be defined as the rear corner of the property at 202...
Right.
Out towards Seneca Park Avenue...
Mm-hmm.
Then east towards St. Paul, and then south, and then comes up west, and then adjoins the southeast corner of the property at 204, correct?
Right.
All right.
There's, I, there's nothing wrong with a variance there, I'm just saying that...
Well, that's, that's not a variance.
No, I know.
That's permitted under the town code.
I, I understand that.
Okay.
I'm just saying that with that, the orientation of the house, and the combined driveway, it looks more like a compound, as opposed to a single-family home. Not in line with... home, not in line with the other residents on the street. The only issue before you is the variance to adjoin those two driveways and give them relief on the code. And I think the attorney mentioned that that driveway was put in in 2015. That is incorrect, because I believe it was in 2013, because I had met with Bellows on it in 2015. So I'm just trying to, you know, get the timeline straight. They knew it was an issue, they said they were putting the planter in in order to get approval from planning, and now they don't want to do it. So I'm asking the board to enforce the code, have the site finished the way they proposed and got it approved. And also, there is a petition with 24 signatures from 16 households on Totem Trail, and on Totem Trail, there's only a total of 25 homes, two of them are the applicants, so 16 out of 23 households are in opposition of this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone here who would like to talk to us about the application? It's neither for it or against it. Come forward, sir.
I'm Dieter Hetzel, I live at 225 Totem Trail, which is a couple of houses down from the houses, properties in discussion. And I would just like to take a step back to how we got to this particular situation. When the properties were purchased from the doctor who was selling them, Stacy Romeo came to the neighborhood with the plan and was very gracious, very interested, and she showed us what the plans were. And she had the blueprints, and right there they were, and we were able to comment, provide input. And then number 204, it turned out, was built exactly as was called for on the plan. 202 was a multi-story facility, which had much less square footage, and was totally out of keeping with the neighborhood. And so we said, why don't you just build another house similar to 204? And it was like music to ears. It was welcome, it was marvelous. I almost had the impression that this is really what they wanted initially. But to accommodate the number 202 on the property, which was a corner property, the house had to be turned 90 degrees. And this, as Ms. Lopa said, is why the garages face each other and why it made a joint driveway very attractive. Now, you got a very good memory, because you were here for the first zoning board meeting. It was a very contentious discussion. And the plan that we were led to believe, that went through the boards at the time, called for a separate driveway. And the council's memory may be a little bit shaky on that, he's about my age, so it happens, you know, but anyway, it was divided. And so we raised the question at the meeting, and the councillor who has since passed away, Danorelli, Danorelli said, "Don't worry, these are good people. It's a good family, don't worry about it." And I had no question that it's a good family, honorable people, contributors to the community. But also, what enters the equation here came, it went from Stacy and Paul to Park Real Estate Management Incorporated, LLC, Limited Liability Corporation. Now, corporations are not people. Because Kodak, my former employer, that was telling me, "Well, this downsizing is the last one." Okay, the last one. "Oh, don't worry, don't worry, Mr. Hetzel, your medical plan is assured." Okay, Mr., I believe that, I believe that, really. And more recently, there's now a called Valiant Pharmaceuticals. Valiant Pharmaceuticals, they bought Bausten-Lam, local corporation, right? And the CEO had all these magnificent plans, and the stock shot up like that. Well, he was blowing smoke, the stock went down like that. All of a sudden, jobs were in question, organizations were in question. So people are one thing, individuals are one thing, and corporations, they march towards different drummer. And I guess this is what happened here, that they took certain initiatives, certain aggressive actions that were inconsistent with what they had laid out to begin with. And on the issue of the driveway, I think I lost, left my one sheet, my note at the chair, the reservation we had about the driveways...
You want to go and get something from your chair, feel free to do so.
No, I'll add a little bit. The reasoning behind the driveways was, A, this is what the code called for, and B, this is what they sign up for. And yet, what happened was a total disregard, and the gentleman actually effectively mentioned that, because it was too late, it was done, and we don't want to pay the additional cost to maintain it. Well, you knew ahead of time going into this thing that you're violating. And as the allegation that these driveways are the fad, or that they're the vogue, this is also not quite true. In fact, we talked to the development board, and the comment was that these driveways lead to problems when somebody dies, somebody moves, whatever the case is. All right, that's 20 years in the future, we're all dead in 20 years, it's gone. But anyway, this was the allegation. And I forgot my other train of thought, but they knew about this going into the thing, and they violated it, and you were aware of the issue there too, so that's just a little bit more insight. I have to add this, though, that from what was there before, which was a couple of vacant lots, Dennis, too, decided to become a cigar salesman and whose house was on the market for about five years, what we have today is significantly better. And in fact, it also spurred the sale, I think what these folks did spurred the sale of number 200, of number 200, because now that's been sold, and they're putting in geothermal insulation, heating, whatever, they're putting in a pool. What I'm saying is, the end product today is much more, is much better than it was back then. But the road to getting there was led, was caused by some, prompted by some misconceptions, some exaggerations, some deviations of memory. And I think the gentleman made a very telling remark, "We got this, the combined driveway, we always wanted, all kinds of traffic, all kinds of vehicles, that's the very thing we don't want. That's what we don't want." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak with respect to this application? Would the applicant care to rebut what's been presented?
You know, it's interesting, I've been doing this a real long time, not as long as Charlie, but I've probably been at 300 or 400 of these meetings over the last 38 years that I've been doing this. The zoning made a comment that, I'm not sure what it meant, but we all have the right to come to this zoning board of appeals at any time to ask for relief. That's what this board is supposed to do, it's supposed to give us relief if we make a case to do that. You're not supposed to uphold the zoning code, you're supposed to weigh the merits of our case against the community at large and the neighbors, and you all know that, but we did that for the benefit of the neighbors that are here speaking against this. Certainly, there always is compromise. And I'm sure that this board will come up with some solution that would be acceptable to all the parties, hopefully. Sometimes, now, all the parties would not be happy, or as happy, but I'm certainly going to leave it in your hands. I'm not going to belabor the point, going through all of the emotional statements that may have been made here tonight, I think it's not relevant to this board. We'll keep it right on point, and I don't want to take up too much time, because I'm usually at the end of the meeting, so I know what that feels like. But if the board does have any further questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise I'm done.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, Mr.?
Shared driveway, there's an agreement that's usually entered into, right?
That's correct.
Legally binding agreement.
Binding forever.
No, I have not perused this thing to a large degree of detail. So I'll just simply ask, if you have a family situation, down here, family there, and let's say somebody does die or moves or something...
The easement is recorded and runs with land.
Runs with the land.
Runs with the land. Very similar to a variance, it runs with the land.
Right.
Unless you put some caveat on it, but there isn't in this easement. The easement will be there in perpetuity for those two houses.
Whether they want it or not.
That would be correct.
Okay, what if both parties agree that something should be dividing these two driveways? They could appeal that later, right?
You and I are not attorneys, luckily, so we're going to leave that answer to all the smart ones. There's lots of attorneys in this room, they can answer it. I don't know what, how to break that easement.
Because this isn't the only shared driveway in the town of Arundicoid, I know that.
There are many single-family shared driveways in Arundicoid, there are many townhouses, zero-lot line condominiums, condominiums, there's a lot of shared residential parking, not only in Arundicoid, but all over.
I think the motivation for me asking this question in the first place is that, right, the way it stands right now, it's a perfect, it's a good thing. You have a great driveway, you have a, everybody that lives there is happy with it, and there are good reasons for it.
That's correct.
But what happens if that changes? I mean, is that going to devalue the property, or is it going to be something that can be tweaked?
Well, I don't know that you can tweak an easement easily, but again, we'll leave that to the legal minds to tell us that, you know, and the same thing with value. Every time you come to a meeting, someone says that someone else is going to devalue their property, but yet, I've never seen anybody come in with a dollars and cents, tell us that, why it's going to be devalued, from a professional, you know, from an appraiser, not from somebody with an opinion, but somebody with a licensed opinion. And I've never seen, even after things have been passed three, four, or five, 10 years later, that the property values have been impacted in a negative way. So I don't know, it's a lot of emotion, in my opinion, and it's this board's job to weigh through that and get to the facts to determine if we have presented a case, if the neighbors have presented a case, if possibly there's a compromise. I don't really want you to compromise, but of course, we would always be reasonable.
Mr. Thomas, I can respond to that. If the two owners of the property decided that they wanted to do away with the easement or change the easement in any way they could do that, they would obviously have to comply with the zoning of the town of Arundicoid to do so. So if they did, in fact, split it, if the variance was granted, and the future owners decided to do away with the easement, they could do it, then if the current zoning was still in place, they would have to come to the board either for a variance or have to put in a separation. Answer that. I would just point out just a couple of things, I know you want to get moving with us. I think it's telling that the most immediate neighbors are the ones that are in favor of this, they're the ones that are, I would guess, mostly impacted by this, if anybody's impacted. I don't believe that this, in fact, changes the character of the neighborhood. Anybody who's been down there sees that these houses do, in fact, enhance the neighborhood. So, thank you for your time.
I actually have a couple of questions. If I understand correctly, there was no requirement for a planner when this board approved it, is that...
I believe that's correct, yeah.
This board didn't address that issue.
Right. It didn't address, so just to split the property line, there are three homes, the size of your homes are comparable on Totem, all the other homes are older and smaller.
Well, the homes on Totem was built in like '87, '88, '89, so, you know, they're all, they're not old, but they're...
Older than your...
Older than the current homes, yes.
The three homes that have immediately joined the property.
Okay. You all set? Thank you, everybody, sorry to have taken so much time. That's what we're here for.
We'll close the hearing with respect to that matter, move on to the next item on our agenda.
ZB 1606-7, upon the matter of request by David and Kirsty Flanagan for an area variance to install a four-foot-high, open-type front yard fencing exceeding maximum permitted height and linear footage on premises 4140 St. Paul Boulevard in an R1 residential district.
I'm David Flanagan.
I'm Kirsty Flanagan, we reside at 4140 St. Paul Boulevard.
Do you, each of you both swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to start by saying that in our site map that you might have received, it was submitted in our packet, and what was circled on our lot, after speaking with the fence company and showing him our front porch, we extended that in our estimate from the three-foot in from the St. Paul side down Wildmere to where you see blacktop driveway, it would have to go up the driveway where you see concrete and then close in our porch due to the fact that the edge of our porch is all steps going down. The reason for our request is, we have a two-year-old and a nine-month-old, and as you can see by our property map, we have all this side property and front yard to kind of utilize. And we do have a fence on the other side, but there's lots of concrete and a huge shed, so there's not a whole lot of room for our son to run around. That huge side lot that faces Seneca School, we play in a lot, and we play out front, and in speaking with our neighbors, once they saw the sign go up, and they said, "Oh, what are you..." I said, "A fence," and I'm sure they all are in agreement that when I yell, "Logan, don't, Logan, don't, Logan, don't run in the street," they're going to be more than happy to hear me not yell that to him anymore with a fence up. So I did go up and down St. Paul, and we do live, I'm sure you're familiar with the area, but on the corner of Sagamore and Thomas, that yard that that fence would go up, we're asking for the same exact fence. So it would basically just look exactly like the fence that's facing Thomas and Sagamore.
An ornamental fence.
It's an ornamental, just no spokes coming out on the top of it, nice flat edge.
Thank you.
And then on the corner of Radcliffe and St. Paul Boulevard, there's also the same fence, three feet back around their property line that we saw. So, I mean, we spoke with our neighbors, unless anybody else has called and said, "Absolutely not," they've all been in pretty much agreement that, yes, they don't mind if an ornamental fence went up in our property line. It would be great to be able to have that side yard to play with our boys instead of the concrete that is on the other side, and just, you know, put a swing on the tree that's on the corner there. St. Paul Boulevard is so busy, and now with all of the construction that has just gone on there, so many people now will use our street as a turnaround and then realize, "Oh, I'm on the wrong street," and they use our driveway as the turnaround point. We were out in the yard last night, and within a matter of an hour, at least five cars backed in, used our driveway, and then backed out again. And again, I have a two-year-old, and he's 100% boy, he doesn't listen, he runs everywhere, and the word "stop" really isn't in his vocabulary. So it is really for the safety of our children to have this side yard for us to be able to utilize.
Can I just ask one?
Sure.
I mean, we granted the variance on Thomas Ave, the same type of a fence, you know, so I think that that makes, I mean, this board granted that variance on a corner lot, which is like this, but could you just clarify, what were you saying before about changing the dimension?
He kind of circled, when we submitted our site map to Regency Fence, and when I guess he came to get a permit, he kind of circled where the fence would be, but I had him come out to our house and actually show him, you see that L shape there? He was going to kind of run the fence through the middle of our front yard.
So the fence is going to extend east all the way to the driveway?
It would extend, yes, it would go to the blacktop and then up to the house to enclose our front porch as well, so it would add on...
That was, thank you.
A little bit, sorry.
Correct, that part of it won't need a variance.
That's correct, just the part that he circled would. Or to the front foundation line, parallel with St. Paul.
I just didn't want to put that in, and then you guys come by and say, "Well, no, you circled that side, you didn't circle the front," so...
Well, it'll change the linear footage, but...
No, that portion of the fence that she's talking about, extending it to the blacktop, would actually be qualified as the side yard, and so the four-foot height on the side yard is permitted in the code. So she only need, they only, they only need the variance for the portion that's technically defined as the front yard.
Right. You mentioned that you have a fencing contractor that's doing this for you?
Well, I received an estimate from Regency Fence, yes.
And the code permits a three-and-a-half-foot open fence where you want to put a four-foot fence.
Correct.
So the variance that you're asking for is six inches. But my understanding is that four-foot fencing is the norm, that's standard, it's stocked, and it's readily available, and three-and-a-half-foot fencing is custom and not readily available, it would be made for you because of the six-inch difference. Is that your understanding? It would be made for you because of the six-inch difference. Is that your understanding?
Yes, he actually circled that, and then he knows that we were coming tonight, he couldn't make it. But he actually did circle it, and he kind of crossed out, I don't know if you guys want to pass this around and look at it. He said what they do is they order it, and then where the bar comes across the bottom, they knock that out, and that's what would be code, I guess, so to speak, instead of the four feet, so.
So on every, what are they, three-foot, six-foot panels?
It looks like six-foot, yes.
So on every six-foot panel, the contractor would be cutting off six inches to make it conform to the code?
Yes.
And my guess is that he's gonna charge you for cutting off each six-inch piece, right?
My guess is he's going to charge us a lot for this, and like I stated earlier today, do I want to spend upwards of seven thousand dollars on a fence? Absolutely not. But when it comes to the safety of my children, you can't put a price tag on that. And if it costs twelve thousand dollars, I'm gonna have to pay for it, because I want to be able to play outside with my sons and enjoy it, and, you know, what are you gonna do? I'm sure you guys are parents or grandparents, and it's, it's for the safety of our kids. And our neighbors we did speak to said it would add, you know, value to the neighborhood. Our neighbors across the street have a wood six-foot fence that goes along their, um, yard. So I know, I, like, nobody has issues with that fence, so... Ours would basically look exactly like the one you said you, um, signed off on, on the corner of Sagamore and Thomas, so.
About three months ago, I think.
We're just crossing our fingers. So, unless anybody has any questions, I know you guys have a busy night ahead of you, so.
Well, I'm confused about something here, and I, I wasn't before. It says the request is for a four-foot fence.
Yes, sir.
Now we're talking a three-and-a-half-foot fence.
He suggested we, okay.
Three-and-a-half-foot fence is permitted under the code. The four-foot fence is what they're asking for, so the variance is for the six-inch difference.
Okay.
That's why we were talking about cutting it off, to make it, they wouldn't need a variance at all to go with three-and-a-half feet, but they'll have to pay the guy to cut six inches off the fence.
Okay, so this way, if we do what they're asking, and we approve a four-foot fence...
It's gonna save us a lot of money.
Not cutting extra thing off, and we're not paying extra to cut it off, make it six inches short.
But nobody's gonna go down to St. Paul and say, "That fence..."
Six inches too high.
I hope not.
They might, you never know.
Right.
Who's Logan?
My son.
Oh.
But we just play outside every night, so it's just hard for me, and with a nine-month-old, to be chasing him out front and holding my nine-year-old and playing, and...
See, I live on Portland Avenue, and everybody's wondering who Logan is. He's not the very loud voice.
That's me, you won't hear it anymore if we have a fence, I promise, I won't have to yell at him, he can run all over the yard.
Now I'm clear.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about three-and-a-half versus four-foot fences and front yards and things like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter, and move on to the next item on our agenda.
We're good to go, thank you very much.
Thank you.
ZB sixteen oh four dash four, upon the matter of request by Land Tech Surveying Land and Planning, acting as agent for Lighthouse Point Property Associates for area variances to construct a one-hundred-and-thirty-five-unit multifamily apartment development comprised of two four-story, fifty-four multifamily apartment unit buildings with ground-level parking, and one three-story, twenty-seven multifamily apartment unit building, a two-story clubhouse with pool, with less than required setbacks and exceeding maximum allowable density on premises nine fifty-one, ten twenty-seven Thomas Avenue, and forty-five Pattonwood Drive in RH River Harbor District.
Before we get underway, it was, uh, pointed out to me earlier tonight that the seeker review process with respect to this project has not as yet been completed. Uh, because of that, uh, while there's going to be a presentation tonight, and while we're going to give everyone who wishes to address, uh, the application in any fashion, uh, the opportunity to do so, no decision can be made by us this evening, because the seeker review process has not as yet been completed. So, uh, this presentation tonight is, in essence, to educate us as to the project, because this, although I know it has been the subject of much publicity elsewhere, I don't believe you've been before us before with respect to this, other than to have us say that the planning board could, with our blessing, be the lead agency and do all the work that that entails. Uh, and, uh, so it's, it's to educate and inform us as to the nature of the project, to educate and inform, uh, the viewers as to the nature of the project, and to give us the opportunity to also hear from those who wish to address, uh, the project, in whatever, uh, manner or form that might be. Uh, so with that understanding that we're not making a decision this evening, uh, we're now going to go forward. And are there any, Mr. Knopf, do you have anyone who you would anticipate, uh, who would not be, uh, subject to the disciplinary rules that would be speaking?
Uh, yes, although, uh, Mr. Shoraba, I'm not sure if land surveyors have disciplinary rules.
If whoever that's going to be could just stand up and raise their, uh, right hands, do you swear or affirm? You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, my name is Alan Knopf, I'm attorney for, uh, Light, Lighthouse Point Property Associates. Um, I'm, I am a, one of the members of the LLC. Also, Charles Morgan and Gordon Howard are here tonight. Uh, they're also, and, and Joe Catalani are also, um, have ownership in the, uh, in, in the sponsor. We're also here with John Shoraba, our, uh, land consultant from, uh, Land Tech, who will also be presenting. Uh, what I'd like to do tonight is, since, as the chair indicated, you cannot make a decision tonight because the secret process has not been concluded, but we did want to introduce you to the project, uh, explain our application, and see if the board had any questions, whatever, so if we come back next month, uh, we'd be able to give you more information if there's, um, i- i- if you want to, um, inquire in any areas. Um, Lighthouse Point is going to be a great project for Arundic quite in our community. Uh, right now, we're planning on one-hundred-and-twenty-five luxury apartment units, along with parking, uh, and roadways on about five-point-five acres in the town of Arundic quite. Uh, we're hoping to begin later this year with the project. We'd also, uh, now have about eight thousand square feet of commercial in the front building in lieu of, uh, the, uh, additional ten units we had originally, uh, applied for. And the property, or, or, the project would be on three parcels owned by, uh, the Gilbert family, that I, I did just pass out the parcel map, so you can see that. Uh, one thousand twenty-seven Thomas Avenue is a larger parcel, about three-point-seven acres. The front parcel fronting Thomas Avenue, nine fifty-one Thomas Avenue, uh, is the old lumberyard parcel. And then, uh, closer to the river, uh, number forty-five Pattonwood. We also, uh, we're under contract to purchase this property from Mr. Gilbert, along with two parcels in the city of Rochester. There's a, um, kind of an odd-shaped crescent-shaped, uh, parcel, one thousand and thirty-five Thomas Avenue, that's in the city of Rochester, and then a triangular piece, one thousand and seven Thomas Avenue, that's in the city of Rochester. Our application is only for a development in the city of Rock, excuse me, in the town of Arundic quite. We are not proposing at this time any, any buildings in the, um, city. And in fact, our plan is not to build buildings on the two city properties we would be acquiring.
I'm confused as to where the two city properties are.
Um, the triangular piece in the, I guess that's the...
Southwest corner.
Southwest corner, that's about point-seven acres.
That's in the city?
Yes. And...
Because it looks to me like the city line...
The, the city line takes this odd jog. There's a, uh, it sort of curves around, it's, um, I think it's like a hundred and fifty feet from where the, where the river was, like, a hundred and ten years ago.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong triangle.
Okay.
You're talking about the...
One thousand and seven Thomas Avenue.
Okay, I see it now, next to the railroad.
Right.
All right.
And we are, um, although we, we could build on a thousand and seven Thomas Avenue in the city, and the city doesn't have any density limits, um, we are proposing to commit to not build a building on that property, which would be right next to, uh, a number of people on, on Beacon View, uh, adjacent. We would, we would not, our buildings would be limited to one thousand twenty-seven Thomas Avenue, nine fifty-one Thomas, and, um, and that would be it for, for the, uh, the project and the town.
Who owns the former New York Central Railroad property now?
Um, CSX. That is a, uh, that's owned by the railroad, there's a, uh, that's a wooded area. Uh, there's like a nature, unofficial nature trail through there that people use, that's owned by the railroad. Uh, so that is not part of, of this project that's before you. The, um, so the, the, the plan would be, um, to build, um, consistent with a, with, again, the, the River Harbor zoning, uh, was enacted in nineteen ninety-nine after the Pattonwood Plan, after there was a generic EIS done by the town, uh, and the Pattonwood Plan was, uh, adopted, uh, which called for the River Harbor zoning, which called for, uh, multifamily and mixed-use, uh, development in this area. So, the use is totally, we're not asking for any kind of use variance, it's totally consistent with what's been planned by the town since at least nineteen ninety-nine.
And just for the sake of those who are not familiar, the EIS is the Environmental Impact Study.
That's correct, that's correct.
And if I could just jump in with a quick question, my understanding is that the brownfield status also prohibits single-family units being built in this proper, in this parcel?
Um, that's correct, what, what, the, the property is part of a, uh, brownfield site, the riverfront, uh, Lighthouse Point Riverfront Site. And we are in the midst of investiga, well, we've done the investigation, the remedial investigation. Uh, we actually submitted in two thousand and fourteen to the DEC and revised it. Uh, we submitted a remedial alternatives analysis, uh, last year. The DEC, uh, asked for some revisions, which by the, we had a comment about that. I've, we do brownfield development all over the state. I've never had a report submitted to the DEC on this where they didn't ask for changes. Um, but they, they basically adopted, you know, accepted what we have proposed. Now they're reviewing the, the revision, um, and, um, will go up for public comment with the DEC. But with the, we're doing a track four cleanup, um, and that would prohibit single-family detached. Um, we have to do multifamily or commercial on this property with that, uh, brownfield cleanup under, under track four. Uh, the cleanup would be, um, certain, um, if there, if we encounter hotspots or what we call putrescible waste, um, then that would have to be either shipped off-site or, uh, buried deep onsite. Uh, and the area has to be capped with either, either two feet of clean dirt that meets the restricted residential standards, or parking lot, or, uh, basically imperme, basically hard surface, the parking lot or the buildings. And the idea there is to keep people from the waste material. This whole area historically was basically the river delta for the Genesee River. And it was filled in, the, uh, the Vanderbilts actually, uh, acquired the property and put in the railroad along the riverbank, and the area was filled in with what we call historic fill. This is mainly industrial waste, a lot of like ash, there was this huge deposit of Gerber baby bottles, we don't really know why. Um, it, some random types of, of materials, uh, not the same extent of garbage that was north of the, the bridge. North of Pattonwood, uh, was the old city of Rochester landfill, um, that really was the main, if those of you who remember, I know I lived in Arundic quite, and we had a cottage in Greece, and we used to drive by there when I was little, and it was the, the garbage landfill there to the north. To the south here, uh, well, I'm not saying there was no garbage, it really was more of an industrial waste, uh, sort of situation. So, under the brownfield, we are, DEC has jurisdiction over that. Um, we would, um, expect approval of the plan, and then we would put on an environmental easement, and, to the benefit of the DEC, and that will restrict the use, so we cannot do single-family residential. You can't have like vegetable gardens, you can't, um, have, uh, well, you know, drink the water, uh, a number of different restrictions, and if you dig, um, you, there's process you have to go through to, um, possibly have soil tested if you're going to break through the cap and, and, and change, uh, what is set up after you, after you finish your, your remediation. So that's, that's the way the brownfield program would work, eventually DEC totally supervises it. Eventually, we would get a certificate of completion if we do what we say we're gonna do as far as the, uh, as the plan. They would certify it as compliant with the environmental conservation law.
I just, I just want to make sure that everyone on the board understands that answer. So, you were saying a minute ago that, under the zoning, mixed-use and multifamily is permitted, and then you just answered my question by saying, according to the brownfield cleanup, single-family is not permit, would not be permitted anyway. So, multifamily would comply with brownfield and with the zoning?
That's correct.
Thank you, that's all I was trying to get at, but that was a good history.
I guess I gave you a long-winded answer, but I wanted to make sure people understood, um, the program. So this would be a, a standalone development in the town. Um, originally, we had proposed one-hundred-and-thirty-five units, we did, did some comments from neighbors and, and, um, asked for reduced reduction, reduction in density, and they, uh, their petition said that it should be mixed-use, because that's what the plan calls for, so we have added some, we added some commercial space, eight thousand square feet in the front building by Thomas Avenue, and reduced by ten units. Uh, and we are taking off the, uh, the podium parking at, in the front building. The project is exactly what Arundic quite has planned for, for over fifteen years.
Excuse me, what is podium parking?
Oh, that is parking underneath the building. And, um, we would, it, it, it kind of provides an extra measure of safety for the brownfield in case there were any vapors or whatever, it's sort of open air. Uh, there will also actually be fans because of, um, also because of the cars, frankly. Um, and, so that's an extra measure. It also allows us to have more green space to concentrate the parking under the, under the building, so that we can have more green space. We did have more parking spots, but the planning board, we've been in front of the planning board since last summer. We came with a concept plan, we made changes, we ma, we've gone back and forth and reacted to various suggestions of the planning board, and we've actually reduced some of the parking to increase green space. Uh, they didn't, they, they felt we really shouldn't have more parking than is required by code.
Isn't there gonna be ground-level parking under most of these buildings?
Yeah, under the, um, under the building on one thousand twenty-seven Thomas Avenue, the main building, we would have, um, the larger building, um, would be a hundred and eight units, and there's parking underneath that. The front building, uh, on Thomas Avenue, uh, would have now seventeen units, seventeen or eighteen units, and eight thousand square feet of commercial without parking underneath. Okay. Um, the, um, in, in the pla, the, the comprehensive plan of the town specifically calls for Lighthouse Point as a high-density residential development, so we feel this is exactly what the town has been looking for. And the, the, the project certainly has been in the forefront for, for many years. Uh, this will be a green development, we're gonna clean up the brownfield, use green stormwater management practices, including permeable paving, uh, a, uh, compliant with the, uh, speedy stormwater permit. We're going to do a number of measures like rain barrels and, and green... a number of measures like rain barrels and, and green roofs and that sort of thing to really maximize the, 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 the green development. And we, we will allow access through the property back to the, to the, to the city property. We had, we have wanted to develop the city property. We do not have any kind of contract or anything with the city to, to develop additional land in the city. So that is not part of this proposal. And it's not before you, you know, it's something that we would like to do, but it's not a, a present proposal. The, again, the, in the reason, I'll get to the, the individual factors, but we're asking, the main thing, we're asking for two things. One is setback variances, which are relatively minor because we're asking for setback from property we would own between our own, own parcels. Because not with any, the, the only setback variances would be for, between, for instance, 1027 Thomas Avenue and 45 Pattonwood Drive, which are both parcels that we would own. We would just be closer to our own property line. And then we're asking for increased density for residential. The overall density for the three parcels in the town of Arunac quite would be like 95.8 over the three parcels. We're asking for 125 units on two parcels, and we'll get to later the, 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 the reason for that. But really, the main reason is the increased cost for the development. Both the, between the environmental costs, the very high costs of the foundations due to the geotechnical conditions. And the geotechnical report is in the, I think you all have the environmental assessment form and the supplemental environmental assessment form that we submitted. That includes, the original EAF includes the geotech report.
What we don't have is the, actually, financial breakdown. You mentioned several times in your report that there's an increased cost.
Yes.
But I haven't seen the spreadsheet saying what the costs are compared to what.
So you've amended your application from 135 down to 125?
Yes, we have.
Like, the commercial that they would gain would be restaurants?
Probably not. It would probably be, be office or specialty retail. It would probably would not be, they are probably would not be restaurant. So the, the extra costs, about $5,150,000. The, the podium parking, which we're doing for a couple of reasons, both to provide the extra measure of protection for the brownfield and also to increase the green space, that's about $2 million. The pilings will be about $1.5 million. And the environmental, about $1.65 for this, for the Arunac quite property. So that's 5.15 million. The, the extra costs, you know, if we were doing the 95 units without any of these extra costs, it would be about 137,000 per unit. But with the extra cost, the, the cost jumps up to 191,000 per unit. With 125 units, we can reduce it. We can basically spread those costs over more units. And with that, in the 8,000 square feet of commercial, bring it down to about 100 and, a little under 174,000 per unit. So...
What are you defining as extraordinary project costs?
The, oh, on, on the first page, where it says, sort of the second box there, podium parking is the 2 million, 1.5 million for the pilings, which, I, I don't know if you're familiar, but when they built the, the O'Rourke Bridge, they had real problems. And here, we're gonna have to do these, I think it's hillical piers. It's a long ways down to the, to the bedrock, basically. So we have to do these special foundations. The soft cost for environmental between all the studies and the, you know, testing and all that, allocated to this part, you know, it's not just this parcel, but we allocated about, it's originally, we spent more, 850,000 and then about 800,000 will be the cost of putting on the cover, completing the, you know, the, completing the brownfield between the two feet of cover and the engineering and all, and certifications and all.
So really, your cost difference is just in the economies of scale. The cost should be the same whether you're building 95 or 125. You're just saying that if you build more, you spread the costs out more, and you can also recoup your money, more, more return on your investment. So, so there really is no difference in costs. There's a difference in how you recoup your money back by the larger and smaller units.
That's exactly right. The, the return on investment, if you look at the second page, the return on investment with what we're proposing isn't that great, frankly, 5.25%. But with the 95 units would be 2.92, which is just too low for us to get financed. You know, it, it's just not an acceptable rate of return for the project. So, that's the kind of, you know, it, it's basically to spread the costs over, over more. Now, we are only asking for an area variance, but I understand that, you know, certainly this is important issue. We're not, we're not asking for a use variance. So, maybe I'll, I'll just, you know, go through the, the factors. The neighborhood character, you know, the, again, the town plan calls for this sort of development here. I mean, this, this sort of development is allowed and is encouraged because the town wants to develop the harbor area with multiple uses, mixed-use. Try to encourage, have, have Arunac quite take advantage of the waterfront location. You know, as the town where the, where the land meets the water, wherever. The, right now, the site is pretty much, you know, it's vacant. It's just, there's, the, the owner removed a lot of trees, which was controversial. We would put back a lot of trees. The, there are single-family houses on Thomas Avenue. There's, there's five houses. And there's, up above, there's houses on, on Beacon View. The, in the environmental assessment in tab B of the initial environmental assessment, we have photos from Beacon View. There really is very limited views. It's, it's heavily wooded. And the view, when you do peek through right now, you see the, the sheds and outhouses and whatnot. The, but it, but it's very screened. We would actually increase the screening with our, with our landscaping plan. The, the, the development's consistent with the town's plan. The major theme is development of a design theme benefiting this area's history, resources and image as a riverfront gateway to the town of Arunac quite. And the, the, 2014 comprehensive plan update set forth Lighthouse Point Design Principles to encourage multi-story buildings, encourage activity in vibrant public spaces to maximize utilization of the riverfront, et cetera. We actually think that we will, you know, it, it, this will increase property values in the area. However, we have offered a, for some, for the adjacent properties, a property value protection plan, so that through a process, if people for some reason couldn't, lost value, which we can't imagine would happen, that's why we feel good about offering it. We think property values are gonna go up. We would guarantee values. As far as alternate solutions, alternatives, really that, you know, it's high cost to investigate and remediate the brownfield. But it's to the public benefit to, to take care of this longstanding issue. Very poor geotechnical conditions, so we need the expensive foundations. Also, the land near the waterfront is expensive, and so we need enough units to spread the costs. Again, it's consistent with the comp plan. It's caused for multi-story buildings and high-density residential development. I went through the, the brownfield program. Again, this would be consistent with the Track 4 cleanup to have the multi-family residential. While there is, it'd be an increase from, originally, we asked for 95 to 135. Now we're only saying 125. That is an increase. But I will point out that we could actually build the additional 30 units on 1000 and Thomas Avenue in the city. So if you consider, and we're going to commit as a condition to our application that we will not be building buildings on 1000 and Thomas Avenue. So we could put a building there, put additional units in the city between there and some of the 1035 Thomas Avenue. We're not gonna do that. At least, that's our, that's our proposal. We would not build there. Certainly, 1000 and Thomas Avenue would be closer to the, to the neighbors. The, so the allowed density across the three parcels in Arunac quite would be like 95.8. If you figure the same density limit with the, in the city parcels we're including, it would be about 113. But the city has no limit. So again, we could do the 125. We would just have to move some of the units to the city near the neigh-, nearer to Beacon View and the, and the nature path. The, as far as the setbacks, the, there'd be a zero rear setback for the building at 951, which would, would join 1027 Thomas Avenue, but those are both parcels that we would own. So, there's really no harm to anybody. And then, the second, the, the 1027, excuse me, there'd be a 26-foot rear setback for 1027 Thomas Avenue. Again, that would have joined 45 Pattonwood Drive and be near 1035 Thomas Avenue at the back, closer to the river, that we would also own. So the setback, I don't really see as any issue affecting anybody. The physical environmental conditions, this is going to be a green development that'll have a positive impact on, on the environment. We're going to clean up the area, develop it in accord with the town's plan, so we see it as an environmental positive. Some of the trees were removed. We're actually gonna increase the landscaping, provide some public access through to the city property. And, and just so you know, the, some of the materials in the ground, there's, in the subsoil, metals including barium lead and mercury, some semi-volatiles. In the groundwater, there was, there were some metals. And there was some very limited volatile organics in, in, in the soil gas. So though, we don't think that that's really going to be much of an issue. So we are doing the Track 4 cleanup with the environmental easement. So that'll be a real positive for the environment. And we're going to use the most advanced methodology for green stormwater control, permeable paver, paving, rain gardens, rain barrels, grass swales, underground water storage, et cetera. So, and lastly, the situation's not self-created. You know, the landfilling happened before the 1970s. We didn't have anything to do with it. And, as I say, the geotechnical conditions came from the Ice Age. Nobody, nobody caused that. It's just a very difficult situation near the river, but the town has called for development in this area. So we think this would be a great, great project for Arunac quite, and we hope that you'll, we'll approve it. I, I guess I'll turn it over now to Mr. Catalani, who may have something to add here.
Hi, Joe Catalani, 136 Shore Drive. I guess I'm here to speak more about betterment to the town in the need for to-date stock apartment housing. Real estate trends have changed, and although a lot of people will argue that point, these are facts that are very easily verified on your smartphone or by talking to a real estate professional. Trends have changed to the point where millennials up to 34-years-old either live at home or rent. They don't buy houses, yet. A large majority of them. On the other end, and they, they occupy probably 25% of the market. They just passed the baby boomers about a month ago. The other end is the baby boomers, 46 to 64, representing 65% of America's wealth and on the move. They're also changing. And many of them are renting as well as opposed to owning a home and maintaining a home. Or at least giving it thought. This is easily proven by looking what's happening around the towns around you. In Greece, there's probably 14 of these, 14, 15 of these units of to-date. They're not luxury, but they're apartments that are built for today's living. They have granite surfaces. They have hardwood floors. They have a place where you'd wanna live or where you'd want your daughter to live. Webster, Greece's last one has 500 units alone. Webster has a dozen of these things. They saw this trend coming 10 years ago when it started and they reacted to it. Arunac quite did too, evidently. They, they allotted this land for it, I'm guessing. You'll never get the amount of apartments that this town needs. We're the second-largest town in the county, and we have zero, no units. The units that we have are older units that are not, that conform with 1970s, 50s. And what happens is, and, and some people think, well, we, we don't need that. You do need that. Because these people are high, high wage earners. And what happens is, when that 34-year-old decides to rent, he doesn't stay in Arunac quite because they don't have any stock. He goes to Webster. He goes to Greece. And then 12 years that he spends there, guess what happens? He gets acclimated to that town. He doesn't come back. And if you, and, and my opinion is, if you don't do something about it soon, they're, they can change the dynamic of a town. And I think it's something the town really needs. That's, that's, that's really it. That's how I feel about this town. I've been here for my entire life. And this is something that this town desperately needs. I hope we do it.
Thanks. And I just want to add, Joe is a longstanding real estate broker. He has a Caldwell Banker office on Park Avenue. John Choraba from Lantech will make a few remarks also.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Choraba with Lantech. And I think Alan did a very good job describing the project in great detail. This plan that you see before you is a culmination of about a year and a half of effort on our firm. And I'm really here just to answer any questions regarding the kind of nuts and bolts of the project. If you have any question, you know, sewer, water, grading, things like that, I can answer. Alan mentioned about reduction. Working with the planning board and workshops has been a very benefit, beneficial project to us, our path to this point. And we actually reduced 54 parking spots under their direction from our last plan. So, right now, we meet code with our parking, and we're not asking for any variances or use variances, Alan said. So with that, I'll take any questions related to the plan, if you have any.
I'll ask one question. I thought rain barrels were illegal in Arunac quite.
I don't think so. I think they're part of a green practice for the Phase 2 permit, but...
Alright.
Alright, that'll conclude our, our, our presentation. Thank you.
Can you clarify for me, and for those who, like me, aren't clear, what exactly is the variance that you would be seeking from this board once the seeker review process is completed and you're back in front of us for a variance?
Alright. Well, the rear setback is 50 feet. So we would want zero for 951 Thomas Avenue, so that...
Point that out, just so everybody knows, right there.
So, this building will go right to the property line. So we're gonna have zero setback from our own property. And then, this building, you need a 50-foot setback, but we only have 26, I think it is. But again, this is, it'd be adjacent to property that we also would own. So those are the setback variances. The other variance is, we want to have 125 units on two parcels. So that's a density, a, a density variance.
An extra 30 units.
Right. We would be allowed 95, almost 96, on three parcels. We want to concentrate them on two parcels, have 125. And again, we would pledge that we would not, we will not be building on this... And again, we would pledge that we would not, we will not be building on this parcel, any buildings on this parcel, or, or this parcel.
And how would that pledge be set forth, other than you pledging that to us?
It would be a condition of the approval. I mean, it's part of our, well, I mean, it's part of our application, but, you know, it would be recited, or, we could put a deed restriction, sure.
All right. There'd be a deed restriction that would.
Yeah, we can do that, yes.
And you are going to be owning, even though they're city properties, you are going to be owning those other two parcels that are along the river.
Yeah, we're.
They're all under contract together.
This.
That's city property that runs along the river edge.
Oh, no, we're not under contract for that.
So does Mr. Gilbert.
Maybe I confused you. There, if you look at the parcel map I passed out, the, there's two properties owned by Gilbert's that are in the city of Rochester.
Which are.
Which are 1,007 Thomas Avenue.
Point at him, I'd appreciate it.
That is right here.
And, and you are not buying that parcel?
We are buying it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood your question.
All right. And then the parcel along the river edge, that parcel.
Yes, well, the river is here.
Yeah, right, but the, the city, the city property is what, what I'm.
This is city-owned property.
Right. And are you buying that as part, part of the whole package?
Not at this time, no, we are not. We would like to, but this, that is not part of the proposal. We do not have a contract to buy that property, no.
Is that owned by Mr. Gilbert?
No, it's owned by the city of Rochester.
Oh, okay, I thought that was owned by Mr. Gilbert.
There's two pieces in the city of Rochester, 1,035 Thomas Avenue and 1,007 Thomas Avenue that are on your map, that are owned by Gilbert's, that we are buying.
Can you point at those?
This is 1,007.
Okay.
And, this one, right? No, this, I'm sorry.
That little strip all the way across.
Yeah, this one.
No?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry, it wasn't colored, you fooled me. This is 1,035, so this little kind of curved piece here, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And those are the two pieces we would, you know, we'll do our deed restriction, whatever, that would pledge that we would not put buildings there. So that, you know, so that then the density, we're kind of taking the density that's in the city and putting into the town, basically.
If, you're buying, if I understand correctly, four parcels?
No, five.
I, I see a four-sided one that is down at the bottom of the page.
Yes.
Thomas Avenue.
Correct.
And I see another one that's abuts the Central Railroad, goes up to a line that comes down by the bridge, and that's labeled 1027 Thomas Avenue.
Yes.
And then I see the one that's 1007 Thomas Avenue.
Yes.
And then I see one that's 45 Pattonwood Drive.
Yes, and then above that.
Partially in Arundic quite and partially in the city.
No, it's two different parcels. They give a different parcel number to the part in the city. It looks like it would be one parcel, but it's split between the city and the, so below the dotted, or kind of dashed line, is 45 Pattonwood Drive, that's in the town of Arundic quite. Above that line, see, it says, now formerly Joyce Gilbert, 1035 Thomas Avenue. That's a separate parcel in the city.
See that now, okay, all right. So those are the five.
Yes.
So if you were to combine those five parcels, well, you'd probably only combine four, because there's, can you combine all those parcels?
Hmm.
Though they cross geographical lines.
I don't think so, but.
But you could combine the three that are in the town of Arundic quite, right?
It would be possible, yes.
And then you wouldn't run afoul of the density, right?
No, we would.
You would?
I mean, we would still need a, a variance, so.
For the setbacks?
Well, not for the setbacks, no.
You wouldn't for that? But you wouldn't need it, you would still need it for the density?
Yes, we'd be still here with the same request, basically.
Because if I understand it correctly, you said it was 96.8?
95.8, so I guess.
95.8 for those three. For 45 Pattonwood, 1027 Thomas, and 951 Thomas.
Correct.
Those three together.
Correct.
And that's why you would need for those three, but you're only building it on the two.
Correct.
And if it was possible to combine all five, what would the density tend to allow?
Well.
You said there's no requirement in the city, but assuming the Arundic quite density factor.
Then it would be 6.5 acres, and it would be 113.3, if the, if they were all combined and the Arundic quite rule applied in the city.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Hey, I was prepared for that.
I had no doubt you would be.
And of course, we, we plan on being back here next month on July 11th, so, you know, we'd be happy to entertain if there's other questions or concerns, whatever. And, and by the way, we are still in front of the planning board, we're hoping to get a determination of significance from the planning board, hopefully at the end of the month, and, and then move with, with the site plan approval and EPAD permit from the planning board too, which we would require. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Those who wish to speak in favor of the application, if you could line up at the west side of the room, if any. I guess there's no one here to speak in favor of the application, so those who are here to speak in opposition to the application, if you would line up on the west side of the room. A minute, I thought we had no takers. If you can go up to the podium, whoever's first, who seemed to have gotten there first, so.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Joanne Mudge, I reside at AD Beacon View Court. I'd like to respond, I have some questions about the comments that were recently mentioned. First is the, is the net cost of the project. I heard a rate of return of 5.25. The question is, is that net of the New York State tax credits? Okay, because I believe that if this is done on a timely basis, that they will be entitled to two New York State tax credits, or refunds, or whatever you want to call it. There's going to be some kind of, of return that should reduce that return on investment, if this is a gross amount, okay? The other is.
I'm sorry, I guess I'm losing you there. How would it, if there was a tax credit?
Yeah, in other words.
How would that reduce the rate of return?
Uh, okay.
It would seem to me it would increase.
It would increase, thank you. It would increase, okay. In other words, their, their project costs would go down, and so their investment would be lowered, and so they could recoup faster. Okay, thank you. Now, just a clarification, I believe these are only totally apartments, no condos. And I believe that this will change significantly the character of the River Harbor District neighborhood. I have a ranch home, and in fact, I'd like to show you a picture, since the developers were gracious enough to show you a picture of their development. And on the contrary, I have a view of the riverfront. And I have a picture right here. And you can clearly see, from my back porch, the river. Okay? Right? When, when their application was filed, they took pictures of my house, but they only took the pictures of, from the street, and not the backyard.
You know, you should hold up, do you go back to the mic, because we won't, we won't pick up on any of your comments.
No, I have a question.
Yes.
Spin that by. I'm just looking at a picture from your backyard directly to the river, right?
Right, right.
But I don't believe that the buildings they're going to build are in that area, they're going to be further over to the north.
They're going to be a little bit further north, okay?
Right, so that wouldn't affect your view?
But it would obstruct some of the view, not all. It would obstruct some of the view that I'm enjoying right now, because I can see to the bridge. Bridge means the river. Okay? Okay?
Would you mind emailing that picture to staff after the meeting too, so we can make it part of the record? Thank you.
When you say that this would alter the character of the neighborhood, the reason that I asked for clarification about what variances were being sought from us, right, was because the variance that's being sought is what determines the variance from the neighborhood. So what we're being told is that under the existing code, anywhere between 95 and 113 units could be built with no density variance being requested or required at all. So without a variance from us, they could put in anywhere between 95 and 113 units along the lines that they're, they're talking about here, without any, any of that density variance. And in terms of the area variance, it's merely a setback in terms of where on the property the building is located. Not what's in the building, not what the building's used for, nothing like that. So if you could clarify for me, and the members of the board, how that difference of, which I think is 30 units to 12 units, is going to alter the character of the neighborhood, and how the setback, whether it's on the line of the property that they own, or setback from the line that they own, alters the quality of the neighborhood? And then the other thing, and certainly I understand, that the view from your backyard is a nice view that you enjoy, but you only own up to a certain point of that view, and beyond that, that's owned by somebody else.
Okay.
And so I don't, I'm not familiar with any entitlement to the view, whereas they, under the existing codes, without a variance, would have an entitlement to develop in a certain fashion the property. And that's what I'd really like, and this isn't just for you, it's for everyone who's going to talk, that's the issue that's, and for a lot of times, we get in these hearings, and we get comments that relate to things that we don't have anything to do with. For example, a few months ago, we had a lot of comments about whether windmills are good or bad, but the town had already decided that the windmills could be there. We get comments that people don't like RVs and boats parked in driveways, but the town has said that they can be parked there for certain months of the year. And so in addressing the variances that, that are here, the comments should be addressed to those issues. That's why I asked for the clarification. What exactly we're being asked to do, and that's what needs to be addressed and will be helpful to us.
Okay.
Comments about, you know, in general, while they're informative, aren't necessarily helpful to what we have to decide.
Let me, let me see if I can answer that for you, okay? The project does not adhere to the town's comprehensive master plan that specifies the housing should be consistent with existing housing. The River Harbor District consists of one- and two-story houses only. The 135, and that's what was published in the hearing, let's say 125 units apartment complex, with four-to-five-story-high buildings with ground-level parking, doesn't even come close to fitting into the character of the, of the neighborhood. We have an established neighborhood, one-story, two-story homes. Now you're talking five, four stories.
Well, again, and let me clarify this with the town's representatives. Is there a limit on the height of these buildings that we're being asked to vary?
There's no height variance before this board. The only variances before the board are for the number of units. Based on the parcels that are in the town of Arundic quite and the calculation, it's approximately 95 units. So the variance before the board is the delta between what's proposed, which the developer indicated was 125, as compared to the 95 that's permitted. You're also dealing with the setback variances from the interior lot lines of the project, there's no height variance.
So if they wanted to build a 10-story building with nine units on each floor, they'd be able to do that if the planning board said it was okay?
No, there, there are height limitations, but this project as it's proposed, does not exceed the height limitations.
Okay, okay. So let's, if I may, let's go back to the issue of variance, okay, density. The project exceeds the existing town zoning code by 42%. That's given the initial application of 135 units, okay? Beyond what anyone would consider a reasonable variance. Now, the resolution that I'm seeking is require the project to adhere to the code. Or to reject the development. Now, what do the neighbors say? I had, I conducted a survey in March 2016, and I had face-to-face contact with 117 residents residing on Thomas Avenue, Eaton Road, Beacon View, Court, Smuggler's Lane, Harbor Hill, Townhouses, okay? 92% of the people that I contacted, that's 117 residents, oppose this project, all right? You have a copy of this, I understand, and it was submitted back in April. Now, each petition was signed by the resident with their name and telephone number and, and email addresses. Please talk to our neighbors. They don't want this project, okay? And here again, not to be redundant, but exceeding the town's allowable area variance for density, and the proposed site does not look like an appropriate fit for the Arundic quite. Now, we think, and I've had two real estate professionals tell me, that property values of up to 20% are likely. Now this, I want to jump back to what, what Mr. Knopf has said about a price guarantee of our houses' values. I haven't even seen or heard any of the specifics of this proposition to the neighbors. So I don't know what, what he is referring to. And it does decrease the quality of life. You've got more congestion, you have people population, you have noise population, you have lighting population, okay? And it does limit access to the riverfront that we now enjoy right now. So, once again, we've been going through this at the planning board, we've had three public hearings, we've met with the developers initially, almost a year ago, about this project. The neighbors do not want this project. It's going to change our neighborhood forever. It's not part of the comprehensive master plan. By the way, the town of Arundic quite sponsored, and I think paid lifespan, to conduct a study about what seniors want here. And in the study, they did not say that the seniors wanted luxurious apartments. What they're looking for is assisted living arrangements, or patio homes if they cannot afford to stay in their own home. Okay, so this notion that this is what the seniors want, and oh, yes, I guess we could go on the internet and download something, but why should we? Because we have our own study here for the town of Arundic quite, letting us know what the senior demands are. We don't have to go to internet, we already know. Lifespan did that for us.
Can I, I, I know that there are a lot of people are going to talk, but I just want to make sure I understand one point. So if they built this with 95 units, you would have no problem with it?
Built it to code.
Okay.
Yes.
So if it was 95 units, same footprint, same size, same height, no problem?
Well, right here, talking about variances, so I want to restrict it to variances right here, because we're, because that's what I've been instructed.
Yeah.
All right, so I would defer that to the planning board when we talk about the design, because I hear about green this, green that. hear about green this, green that, but I don't think the developer has really defined what is meant by green space.
What Mr. Polino's point is, ma'am, is that the developer could develop on the same footprint, 95 units as opposed to 125. And what Mr. Polino was asking you was, you would have no problem with that? Because it was in conformity with the code?
Yes, I have no problem with that, right.
Thank you.
If it's within the code, fine.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Susan McKenna, 50, Beacon View Court. And actually, I guess you didn't have the picture up, but if you have a smaller picture, my house sits directly just to the south of where the end of the building will be. So I will have, and I can pass it on the, my house is on the right there. And I'm here mainly just to talk about the variance, the 95 versus the 125 that they're proposing now. One thing I think you need to take in consideration, that building doesn't really show you the parking underneath, so you're really talking about a five-story building. If you go to code, you're basically going to be taking off that, taking off that top story. And I think that would go a long ways to actually fitting into the character of the neighborhood better. When I look out my back window, I'm going to be able to see that huge building right to the right of my property. The picture that I passed around actually shows an aerial view looking down, which I don't have. I'm going to have a view looking up.
Does the underground parking affect the height? Under the town? Does the ground-level parking affect the height that the building's allowed to be?
Yeah, when you measure it from the ground up, and the height in this district is determined by the planning board during site review, so they have discretion.
So they decide that.
They did, total discretion.
So it's a little confusing, because you decide the density, the number of units, and they decide the height. If you take care of the code and have it down to the 95, you're really taking off that top story, and that probably would conform more to the height. Now, they could turn around and you could say, I'm going to give you the 125, and then they could turn around probably with the height and say, no. I'm not sure if they would. But I would just ask the board to really take a lot of consideration. There's an established neighborhood there. We've been there forever. We're your neighbors. We're your residents. You're there to protect us too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clive Doughton, 160 Beacon View. The purpose of town code is to protect neighborhoods and ensure that development is consistent with those neighborhoods. So all we are asking to do as neighbors is enforce the town code, to not give variances to increase the number of apartments, make the buildings way bigger than fit in with the neighborhood. So please, for the sake of this town, enforce your code. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your address for me? I didn't catch it. 150?
160.
160.
Good evening, I'm Dorothy Broach. I live at 70 Beacon View Court. I'm just at the edge now of this project. It keeps changing. In fact, tonight, we just learned it's changed a little bit more. Do I want this in my backyard? No. Did I try to buy the property behind my house so it didn't happen in my backyard? Yes. Am I lucky enough to have CSX behind my house? Yes. Would they sell the property? No. So we did try to take care of that situation. As far as the variance goes, I'd almost rather see it spread out and get lower than the way it is right now. I mean, it's going to be so high, and I guess there's nothing we can do about it, but I can voice my opinion on it, and that is that I'd like to have it smaller rather than bigger. And I do have children that are in this 34 age group, and they don't live in my home, they live in their own home. And, you know, not everybody wants to stay in the home that they grew up in or in the community that they want to grow up in, and other people can move into us, our community. I just think that we have to take care of us that are here now, so I appreciate if you do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, gentlemen, Chairman. My name is Anna Shalia. I live at 100 Beacon View Court. My husband and I and our two children moved to Arondequoyte around this time last year. I was seven months pregnant. We had the option to live in a lot of different areas in Rochester. I work downtown. I'm a millennial. My husband is a prominent photographer in town, so we looked at a lot of different neighborhoods. And when we drove down Beacon View Court and we understood the community that exists in this town, we decided to live in Arondequoyte and hopefully to put roots down here. I'm here today to talk to you about the difference of those 30 units. Now, we sat here and listened to a conversation about a planter for a really long time, and I understand that that makes a huge difference on that parcel of land, but think about these 30 units and what that's going to mean. It is going to obstruct our view, and no, I don't have, we don't have rights to that view, but it obstructs the reason why we moved here. I urge you to think about the community and the town that you want Arondequoyte to be. Is it transient apartments? No. It's a thriving community, and I don't see this construction, which could live in any town, it could live in central Florida, for God's sakes, does not fit in with our community. It does not fit in with the family of four that was riding their bikes down Beacon View Court tonight when I came to this meeting. It does not fit in with all of our neighbors looking out for each other and taking care of each other. It is not a neighborhood, and it doesn't fit in with why young people, young Rochesterians, are going to move to this town. I am the future of your community. I am very familiar with a lot of millennials, and no, it's not data-based research, but I'll tell you that the ones who don't have kids, they're excited about moving downtown. Downtown's hip. Have you seen these guys with their Rochester tattoos? That's where they want to be. This isn't a smart investment, and the, my main concern is the environmental impact. I understand this isn't necessarily the form for that because of my children, because of my baby. That is my number one concern. My second concern is the quality of our life and the neighborhood that we are choosing to invest in. An apartment complex, which is exactly what this is, luxury or not, in five, 10, 15 years, it's just going to be a regular old apartment complex, does not increase the liveliness of our neighborhood, and it doesn't increase the liveliness of Arondequoyte. People aren't going to go down there for fairs and festivals. The library, that increased the liveliness of our neighborhood and of our community. The characteristic of the River Harbor District should be preserved for the long term. A sustainable decision on your part about those 30 units means this entire project, please consider all of the little kids, they're mostly boys, we don't know why. Beacon View Court has all little boys, which makes my son very, very happy, and my daughter, she's going to be in a lot of trouble. But please consider those kids, it's past their bedtime right now. Please consider the mothers and the fathers who couldn't be here, because it's, we've got stuff to do, we've got kids running around. Tonight, you heard from three women who are all mothers, and we all had babies. I have a nine-month-old too. You heard from another one. We are the future of Arondequoyte. Take care of us and protect us. Keep us safe from environmental factors and allow us to live here, to have a place that there's not a huge, loud apartment in our backyard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone that wants to talk to us about it that doesn't have a view one way or the other, if that's even possible? Yes, sir? Yes, it is.
My name is Jim Fleishour, 110 Portview Circle in the Harbor Hill subdivision. Townhouses. There's 74 residents in there, most of them are senior citizens, and I love it. But the thing is, there's so much undeveloped waterfront area in Arondequoyte, Charlotte, Lake Shore Boulevard. I'm not against this project. I really am not. It's kind of massive, the density's kind of, kind of big, but my main concern is not with the zoning board, I just came here to find out some more information. This was probably the planning, this right here, Thomas Avenue. We walk, we walk all over the place. We love walking around this town. We walk down Thomas Avenue. We live at the top of the hill. There's no sidewalk. It's asphalt next to the culvert. We walk down there, cars zipping by our elbows at 60 miles an hour. Right where the entrance is, I believe, right here, this patio lumberyard. Two years ago, some crazy driver took out a hydrant and a light pole. That's a speedway. I assume somebody's addressing the entrance to this project. It's a two-lane road. During the summer, you cannot get down there. During rush hour, you cannot turn left off of Eaton Road on the Thomas Avenue because of the traffic. Is somebody addressing, is it the planning board? Is that issue being addressed? I don't see any, I don't know how they're going to do it, but wait, the houses are situated right up to the road.
The traffic study was a part, is a part of the environmental impact study.
Right. Has that been addressed?
There's a traffic study, I haven't poured through it, but there is a traffic study for, you know.
Okay. When will we learn more about that?
That's an issue the planning board would address?
Yeah. Well, you just threw it out. Anybody had any issues? Not pro, not con, and I'm not pro, not con right now.
I'm very interested in you proving me possible to not have a position one way or the other.
And one thing I'm not, this is not a gated community, is it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I heard at one point, and that would be very disturbing. Okay. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So you did prove it.
Yeah. All right.
Just a question, a point of clarification maybe from council. Whether or not the planning board in the environmental review is considering the impact on traffic, is that something that we can still consider when we compare the, when we compare 95 versus 125 units, the fact that there might be an extra 30 to 60 cars?
Yeah, so the planning board's going to consider traffic as part of its determination of significance under SEACR, but that's a factor that this board can consider, certainly when determining whether or not a variance for density is appropriate for this site.
Thank you.
Do you wish to further address us tonight, or?
In light of the late hour, I'll be very, very fast, but we do have a comprehensive traffic study, and we supplemented it in light of comments from the planning board, and indicates that, you know, there's really no traffic issue from this development that it'd be very minimal. They don't, SRF didn't see any, any real issue. The, and again, on the views, some of the property owners didn't let us on the property, like Mrs. Mudge, to take pictures, so I apologize, we didn't have a photo from her backyard because we weren't allowed, but the, the, oh, well, then maybe, well, we'll come and, we'll be happy to come and take some photos, and that'd be great. The, you know, they do have the buffer for existing for the CSX property. I don't know how this would limit their access, I mean, this is property they don't own, so I don't really understand that, but we're actually going to allow access across, so we're actually going to increase access. There was a question about tax credits, as indicated on page three of my letter, there will be tax credits paid out, but not received until long after the buildings are financed and constructed, so there, there are quite a ways down the road. And they would partially pay for some, you know, some of the extra costs, but not, they would not totally pay for all those costs, and would not necessarily even be considered by the, by the bank financing. And the, again, I come back to this is exactly what the town called for. I think it will be great for the neighborhood, and Rochester and Arondequoyte have not taken advantage of their waterfront the way they should, and this will be one step forward towards that.
I have one comment with respect to that. I had forgotten to mention it earlier. You mentioned that it's consistent with the master plan, and somebody else said it's not consistent with the master plan. If you and those who think it's not consistent could let us know what portions of the master plan you're relying upon, because it's a pretty extensive document, and focusing our attention on particular parts could be helpful. I'm not looking for it tonight, but if you could just get us, you know, like what parts of it are you looking at, and what parts are they looking at?
Yeah, we do quote it, but I won't go on at length tonight, but we quoted in the letter and on our environmental assessment, but I can provide more on that.
And, I mean, this is a question that's been in the back of my mind, I was going to ask it before. I don't know if we need an answer, if we need to take up a lot of time, but if we don't grant the variance for the density, and we say 95 is the number, what happens?
Then, well, I guess then we might have to put a building here in the city.
Excuse me, Alan. Could you use the mobile mic, just so the viewers at home get to? Thank you.
I think then we would probably have to put a building.
Not on.
Over there.
There we go. Sorry. I think we'd probably have to put a building here to get some more units in. There's not a density limit in the city. We were trying to avoid being closer to the neighbors, so we thought it was better to have more concentrated development over here than putting over there. We might have to add some additional commercial, I guess, to make it feasible, because right now, we're at this like 1.2 ratio for the bank where we just barely make it, frankly. So we really would need to, to increase it. So here, and we're putting more units this way in the town of Arondequoyte, frankly, which is obviously better for the town.
One more question, just the homes that are to the, to the right of the project.
Yes.
I understand you'd like to purchase those homes. In the event you did purchase those homes, would you be putting another building there?
Yeah, we probably would, yes. We'd probably be coming back, and I would think it would probably be commercial, frankly, but it could be residential. But, I mean, to me, it's logical to include that, but, you know, and we're, we've told publicly that we're, be willing to talk to the people, and we've talked, yeah, we've talked to some of the owners.
There's one of these homes in foreclosure that we would be looking to purchase here. We've talked to these folks, they're minimal to selling, and another guy, I think on the corner, one of these guys, I can't remember which one, does not want to sell, and the other one hasn't responded to us. But I would say to you that, you know, these homes are $100,000 homes, let's say. And to get these folks out of them, it's going to be a buck 25 apiece, you know, on five homes, it gets expensive very fast. Then you got to wreck the homes, clear the site. You would almost have to do a commercial building with something on top to pay for that, because it's, you know, and then you've got, again, you got a pile. The pilings on these are 160 feet deep. It is very, very pricey. That answer?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, we couldn't hear back there. The one comment. Um, excuse me. Did you?
Excuse me, you need to use a mic, Joanne.
We didn't hear. Hello? Okay. Hello?
Yep.
Can you hear?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry, we couldn't hear back there, okay?
What did you miss?
Um, over here. What was the statement? Do you have a contract for sale with the city of Rochester?
Is this a back and forth? I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
No, she's just indicating that she couldn't hear what you'd said. That's, that's all.
I'm not sure what she couldn't hear, but.
Apparently, she didn't understand, when you were pointing up to the upper triangle, I think you pointed there in response to Mr. Polino's question, that if you didn't get the density variance that you were seeking, I think that's when you pointed to that upper area, indicated that you would probably put a building there, which is in the city, that doesn't have a density requirement. I think that's what.
That's exactly correct.
Okay. That's what you missed.
Can I just?
No, no.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That hearing is closed for this evening, and we will move on to the next item on our agenda.
ZB 1605-6, upon the matter of request by Carrie Brown for use variance, construct the 3.5-foot by 30-foot deck without a principal structure on site on premises 375 Bayfront Lane North and in R3 Residential District.
Carrie Brown, 375 Bayfront Lane North.
Before we get any further, is there a motion to untable this item?
I'll make a motion to untable this item? I'll make a motion to untable this item.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries seven votes in favor, none in, none opposed, no abstentions. So now, if you'll raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Okay. So my proposal is for a use variance and the construction of a dock attached to the lot with the dimensions of thirty feet of waterfrontage by ninety-foot depth. The proposed work to be done includes the construction of a three-to-four-foot dock by forty-foot long attached to the property. Work will be completed by myself and others. The dock will be placed directly in the middle of the property approximately ten feet from each property line. There is a tree stump adjacent to the existing retaining wall that is approximately two feet wide extending into the four, into the water four feet. No fills required for this project. Construction of the dock has been approved by the Department of Environmental Conservation. And then the qualifications for the use variance. The land cannot yield a reasonable return if the property remains under existing permissible uses, such as a vacant lot that it is right now. The property is zoned as a residential, single-family. It is separated from the principal structure, which is located at the top of the slope. The slope is owned by the town. Therefore, the property does not have a principal structure on it. As the applicant, I cannot realize a reasonable return as demonstrated by financial evidence given. As a property owner, if the house is without a dock, there'd be reduction in property value. The value of the house would be reduced drastically if the lot on Bayfront was not included in this sale. Alleged hardship.
Can you review with us the financial data that you're referring to?
Did you guys get that? Did you guys got that right?
Yeah, but what I'd like you to do is review it to us, because what I got here was a lot of stuff that I'm not sure that I understand how you're indicating, that what you submitted to us shows that you can't realize a reasonable rate of return on the lot.
Right. If I, if the, if the, okay, so the top five addresses are properties that are without waterfront. And then below that black line are properties with waterfront access.
But your property isn't with waterfront access?
Technically, no.
Well, not technically no, actually no.
Yeah.
You don't have waterfront access from your.
From my house.
Property on Ravine Avenue.
Correct.
The vacant lot has waterfront access, but it doesn't have a structure on it.
Correct.
And what you've given us are properties that have structures on them that have waterfront access versus properties that have structures on them that don't have waterfront access.
Right.
How does that show that, one way or another, with, on the issue of reasonable rate of return for the vacant lot that you bought?
If I was to sell the house without the lot on the property as a package?
Well, you can sell the house with the lot as a package, that's not the issue. The issue is, can you realize a reasonable rate of return selling the property with the vacant lot without a dock? The dock is the issue.
I would, I would say no. I've been offered.
And.
Buyouts.
All right. While, while we're on the subject, you attached, and this completely perplexed me, you attached a resolution from the Town of Grand Island Zoning Board of Appeals, June six, twenty thirteen.
That was an example of a house that was not attached to a principal structure.
In Grand Island?
In Grand Island, yeah.
And there.
I could not find any.
I don't wanna be critical of another board, but in our board, we would have findings here about what the reasonable rate of return or the lack thereof was. All this one says is, it's granted. And effective immediately. Doesn't say anything about the reasonable rate of return being realized, not being realized, why a dock, why a dock makes a reasonable rate of return, why it doesn't. And that's the issue in front of us, is.
Okay.
You, you wanna put a dock on a vacant parcel of land that is not attached to a principal residence. Under the town code, that's not allowed. That's a use prohibition. You're asking us to give you a use variance that will let you build a dock on that parcel, and then sell that parcel with a dock to anyone that you'd choose to. There's no requirement that it be sold with your residence. That's how you purchased it, but you wouldn't be obligated to sell it that way, and we couldn't, well, maybe we could, but since it's not directly attached, it might be difficult, but, you know, the, we have to look at the vacant lot with a dock, what's it worth? A vacant lot without a dock, what's it worth? What did you pay for it? And can you sell it without a dock for a reasonable rate of return? We don't know what you paid for it, because you paid for it in conjunction with purchasing
Right.
the Ravine Avenue residence. And this was added in as a second parcel for one, one consideration, whatever the financial amount of that consideration was. What now has to be done to satisfy the use variance standard of not able to realize a reasonable rate of return, is you have to separate out, what's the compensation that you would've paid for that vacant lot? What can you sell that vacant lot for on a Rondicote Bay? With a dock? And what can you sell it for without a dock? And that's, that's why I have a hard time understanding, I mean, in your, in your most recent letter, you said, "I cannot realize a reasonable rate of return as demonstrated by the financial evidence given," but I couldn't figure out from what you gave us, how you, how I could come to the same conclusion that you came to, or any of the rest of us, and that's what we need.
So, like.
Are any of these vacant lots?
No. They're properties on the water with a dock and waterfront.
With a dock and a house?
Yes.
Are there any properties, and at least, you're probably not gonna find them in Rondicote, but are there any properties in Webster or Penfield that are vacant lots with a dock on the bay?
I was unable to find any.
There's, that's probably because they have similar restrictions in Webster and Penfield as we do that may prohibit that.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm just not, I'm not sure how I take what you've given us, and am any better off than I was a month ago.
Okay. Well, I know at the bottom, there's the percentages, average percentage high and low, and then the difference between them, the prices is significant on the water and not on the water.
Sure, if my house was on the bay, it'd be worth a lot more than it's worth where it sits. I think that's probably true of every piece of property in town, other than the ones that are already on the water. But that doesn't, you're asking us to let you take this vacant parcel that isn't connected to your parcel, and from what you described to us the last time, requires quite a trip to get to from your house to connect, build a dock on this vacant parcel that's not allowed anywhere else. The other places where we've allowed the vacant, the building of a dock on a vacant parcel in the waterfront is where the county has put a road in between, and but for the road, the parcel is a waterfront parcel. But that's not the case with you, because you don't have the, the road in between. They can cross the road and be at their dock, and we put a restriction in that that couldn't be sold separately from the house.
Right.
So, that's an entirely different situation than what you're presenting to us. And the burden that you have to get the variance that you want is to show us that, and requires dollars and cents proof, that with a dock, you can realize a reasonable rate of return on your investment, which is what you need to tell us, establish first, is what is your investment? What could you sell it for without a dock? What's the rate of return there? Versus what you could sell it for with a dock? What's your rate of return there? If you can sell the vacant property without a dock for a reasonable price, then you're not entitled to the variance. But if you can't, then you might be. So that's, that's what we need, and having figures of houses on the waterfront and houses that aren't on the waterfront doesn't even begin to, to give us what we need. Okay?
Have you spoke to a Realtor at all, or any Realtors at all, about what that property is worth, just if you sold it separately?
No. Well, she helped me put this, she put this together for me.
She being a Realtor?
Yes.
But she didn't give you an idea what the value of the lot is? I mean, whether it's a building lot or a non-conforming building lot on its own?
No.
What's the assessed value on the parcel? On your tax bill?
On my tax bill? I think it. I don't know. They don't have my tax bill.
Are they separate tax bills? Do you have to pay a tax bill for that lot and a separate tax bill for the?
I did. I paid almost two thousand in taxes for that lot.
Just for that lot?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I don't know how to do the, you, so you have a tax bill, or you can get one?
Yeah, I have.
And the tax bill will tell you what the town has assessed the vacant lot with no dock for.
Okay.
And you've got a tax bill for your property on Ravine Avenue that'll tell you what
Because they're separate, yeah.
that's assessed for. All right? And then.
Could be assessed for a hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars?
It could be, I don't know. That's, but you're, that's a good starting place, is what is the assessed value?
Okay.
For the two parcels? And then have, you know, if you've got a property that's assessed for forty-five-thousand dollars, and you've got a Realtor who says, you know, with a dock, it's worth sixty, and without a dock, it's only worth twenty, then you might have a shot at a, you know, showing a lack of reasonable rate of return without the dock. Of course, then you get into the other questions of, you know, whether it's self-created and all the other issues. I'm just focusing on the reasonable rate of return, because that's the dollars and cents proof that we have to have at ground level before we can even go any further.
Okay.
Mr. Hammond. There was a, in our packet, there's a offer from, I believe, one of the neighbors, Mr. Sam Filippo. And he lives at three-seventy-five.
Council says that the parcel, the vacant parcel's assessed at twenty-thousand dollars.
It is assessed at twenty-thousand?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, he looked it up on some app on the phone.
Yeah, it was on Zillow for twenty-thousand dollars.
Okay.
But it was never bought or purchased for them.
You have a, you have an offer, or tentative offer, from a Mr. Sam Filippo, who lives at three-eighty-three Bayfront, that offered you twenty-thousand dollars for the lot. I don't know if you knew that, or?
Oh, yeah, I got that letter in the mail.
Just recently?
Yeah, today I opened it.
Again, that's where you would obviously discuss with Realtors, I would say more than one, to find out what the value, what the actual, what they believe the value would be if you were going to sell it.
What was the total proper, total price that you paid for the residence on Ravine Avenue and the vacant lot?
Hundred-and-forty.
Hundred-and-forty. What you, a good starting place might be an appraisal of your residence and an appraisal of the lot.
Okay.
Those would need to be done by, you know, a licensed appraiser, who then can tell you, I mean, he might tell you that the property on Ravine is worth a hundred, and the lot is worth twenty, and that you paid twenty thousand too much when you bought it. He might tell you that it, the property on Ravine is worth, you know, a hundred-and-forty by itself. I don't know. Well, that's what we need, we need to know those kinds of things.
Okay.
Let me ask you, do you, do you understand what it is that we're talking about?
I do.
You're clear on that?
Yes.
All right. So, we're back to where we were a month or two ago? I can't remember when we were here last, was it last one? We're back to the, to the same issue. Would you like us to vote on this tonight? Or would you like us to table this again in order for you to look into it? If we vote on it tonight and deny it, you're not allowed to apply again for another year.
Right.
If we table it, you can have more time to explore the offer that's been made to you, to assess whether that offer is a reasonable offer, to assess whether or not you can put together the dollar and cents proof that shows that you can't realize a reasonable rate of return. So would you like that opportunity?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? If we can move on there.
Looks like someone might have a comment.
Oh. Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? I see Mr. San Filippo ready to step up to the podium.
I would like to speak, just a, just a few comments. And I'll just speak to reasonable rate of return.
Can you state your name?
Thomas San Filippo, three-eighty-three Bayfront Lane North. Good evening, honorable members of the board. So just as the reasonable rate of return, I did, as you know, I did make an offer for twenty-thousand dollars. That's the assessment of the property at full market value by the town. And I'd also like the board to know that I, I have purchased two other lots down there. One is eighty-five feet wide. It's more than twice the width of this lot, and I paid twenty-five-thousand dollars for that. I purchased another lot north of that, which is almost twice the size, the width of this lot, and I paid twenty-five-thousand dollars for that. So I think that the assessment is high, twenty-thousand dollars. And I think that that's more than a reasonable rate of return on this lot that's only thirty foot wide. And I just want to make the board aware that there is a reasonable, reasonable rate of return available for that lot.
Okay.
And I won't speak to anything else.
Those, those lots that you bought, did they have docks on them?
No. They did not.
Thank you. Are they all next to your property? Is it all one property now?
No, they're not all one property now. They're still separate lots.
But they're all together?
They're all, they're all together. And.
And this one will be to the side of your property?
One, one is to the north, and the next one is to the north of that lot. They're both to the north of my lot.
And this would be to the south of your lot, right?
This lot is to the south of me. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Your brevity was appreciated.
Hi, I'm Jackie Howard. I'm at three-ninety-seven Bayfront Lane North.
Nope. You're just here to comment.
I am here to comment, and I would ask that you please not table this again. For most of us, it is a huge inconvenience, and for several of us who were not able to make it tonight, it's a physical limitation. There are many reasons this should not be tabled. For every one of the other things that the board lists as a requirement, as a variance, they are clearly not met by this applicant. There is a change in the character of the neighborhood, everyone agrees. I think you'll notice that all, all the neighborhoods to the north and the majority to the south are here for that reason. What she is proposing does not in any way fit in line with the land that is there. It's actually a cove. It comes to a corner. It can't be put in the space that she is requesting, and the nature of the land is such that there is no bathroom facility on it. I cannot emphasize that enough. It is a half-mile walk for me to get to the parking lot, then it's up a huge hill and around the corner for her to get to her house. I am concerned, because the nature of the property is such that it cannot. I am concerned because the nature of the property is such that it cannot be maintained adequately because it is not separate. This applicant has shown us time and again that she is not maintaining the property and even with the scrutiny that was upon her, the property is not maintained. I personally, because of health reasons, have reported several times each time I've offered to leave my name and each time I am told I don't need to leave my name because several neighbors have preceded me in reporting the maintenance of this lot. We are concerned that she and her, whomever she invites, will be using that property for human and dog waste. There is no place to put partying things on that lot unless they are in our yards. It is, because it's a cove, it has to be built up in order to avoid erosion. That was what Mrs. Schaaf tried to speak about last time. It is already eroding and in order to do as she proposes, it would have to be built out or cut back in, which would affect both properties. This is something she is creating. The first thing in, in there it says is not self-created. This is a self-created problem. Please respect our time and our energies in understanding that the rate of return is one factor in the list that you have. Thank you.
I have a question before you leave.
Yes.
What, what do you want her to do with the property?
I...
I, I was down there...
That is not up to me and I do welcome anybody to come.
But it kind of is. I mean, it's, it's kind of up to the whole neighborhood. My question, I was there today and, and...
Where did you park?
Well, that's, that's the funny part. I, I got permission from the guy behind you. That's the funny part. I mean, you, you, you're, you're restricting this person that owns this piece of property.
No, sir, I am not. I am not.
Well, my, wait, hang on, hear me out for a second. Hear me, hear me out for a second. Hear me out. I looked at it, it's overgrown, needs to be mowed, needs to be cleaned up, and I thought to myself, how's she gonna do it? There's, she, she, she doesn't have a lawnmower down there, she doesn't have...
Correct.
...equipment down there and she really can't bring anything in.
Can I, can I ask you to ask her how she does that?
Hold on, ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. Let him finish his question and then you can respond.
Okay. The, the, the whole point of it is, is I wouldn't like to have the lot next to me or you guys looking that overgrown. I understand that. But I also wonder how she's gonna get a lawnmower in there and how she would bring stuff down and the gentleman behind you mentioned where she could leave a lawnmower down there and put it in a shed. Well, you really can't have a shed there either.
Why not?
I, I don't believe you can put a shed on a, on a vacant lot.
Shed on a vacant lot.
Why not?
Well, she would need a...
No, 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 no.
She would, she would need a variance for that shed.
And why would she need a variance for that shed? Because she needs to have a primary residence on that property. That's how it's zoned.
I understand that. But everybody is being critical of the upkeep and what to do, but yet nobody wants to try to figure a way to help it get done.
I got away. And we didn't create this problem. She's created the problem by herself by purchasing a lot.
All right.
With knowledge of the...
Excuse me, you just need to speak into the microphone if you're gonna be providing comment?
I've, I've given her a way out, okay? Nobody says she can't sell the lot.
Right.
Nobody says she can't do with the lot what she wants.
All right, hold on.
Except she can't put a dock in because it's against...
Hold on, please. We seem to be running, we're getting into repeat comments, which we generally don't allow, and we're getting into an exchange which...
I under, I, I understand, Mr. Chairman, and I, and I agree.
We all are aware that you've offered to purchase the property.
I agree.
And that that's a way out. And we're all aware of why, that, that she needs variances in order to be able to do whatever she might do. And that's where we're at and we may table it, we may not. That was addressed by the last speaker, so if, with all due respect, if you could just...
Sit down?
Yeah, sit down and let the next gentleman, let the next gentleman speak and then we'll move on from there. Thank you.
My name's Bob France. I live at 359 Bayfront Lane North. The only two questions I have is that this, this, this young lady spent $140,000 to purchase these two parcels. She must have had a figure in mind what the other parcel was worth. If she'd have bought the ravine without the parcel, what would she have paid for that? So she's not telling us, what did she allocate? She must have allocated a figure for their property. She had to know what, what she was allocating, allocating for their property. And as far, we're not restricting any use. She could still use it from the same as when she bought it. So we're not restricting any use. She can go down there the same as she could the day she bought it as she can today. We're not restricting anything. She is now attempting to add something into the equation that wasn't there before. So on the same token, again, if I'm gonna spend $140,000, in my mind, I'm thinking, well, the slot is worth X amount of dollars to me, otherwise I'm not gonna buy it. What is that figure? Somebody should at least tell us what she valued that property at. I mean, she didn't go in there blindly and again, she had to put a value on it or she wouldn't have bought both parcels. So that parcel at the water was worth something. What was it? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't already spoken that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone who would like to address the application who isn't either for it or against it? Again, I'm not gonna say if that's possible because apparently it might be, but, all right. Anyone else that wants to just talk to us about it? Then we'll close the hearing on that matter and... Next, we have listed as a pending item, the use variance and area variances for 160 Densmore Road. So does that require a motion to impend it or...
Well, I would defer to counsel on the technical approach on this one.
Yeah, I mean, same as the prior application, why don't you just ask the board for a motion and what their pleasure is to take it off the table as a pending item?
All right.
Yes?
Sure.
Okay. PZB 1504-4, upon the matter of request by LandTech acting as agent for Angelo Licardello Smellup Holdings LLC for use variance and area variances to construct 62 town, townhouse units with less than required side setbacks and exceeding maximum allowable density on premises 160 Densmore Road in our 1 residential district.
Okay. Is there a motion to...
I'll make a motion to, uh, take it off the table, for the lack of a better word.
I'll second it again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Vote carries seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The, again, as with the Lighthouse property, this property has not yet had the seeker process completed, so this is a presentation that is being made to the board and comes with any input that the public who's present wishes to offer, but is not going to be the subject of any decision this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm Alan Knopf. I'm representing Smaddle Holdings. The applicant, Angelo Licardello, in the front row here is the, hold up your hand, Ange, is the owner of Smaddle. He may be providing testimony. Also, John Charaba from LandTech and our MAI Appraiser, Kevin Bruckner, will also be giving some testimony, so if you want to...
So if you three could, Mr. Charaba, you've already been sworn, so yours just will continue. If the both of you could, do you, just raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a proposed development for 62 single-family units that would be clustered into eight buildings. The, it has gone through some different, some changes over the past year and a half that we've been trying to, that we've been working with the town on this. We're waiting for a secret determination, so as the chair indicated, a decision cannot be made tonight. What I'd like to do is just briefly take you through a little bit of the background. The deputy town attorney has ruled that the clustering of the units would require a use variance. We elected not to appeal that. We originally, so we are not appealing the, the determination. We are instead seeking a use variance for the development as well as area variances. So the use variance would be to construct basically what is row or townhouses or multifamily dwellings in the R1 district and also that we would be seeking density variance. Now, our client, this property has been undeveloped for a long time. We did give you some historical information, some historical aerial photos and all. We submitted an environmental assessment and we gave you a revised one in May 2016, which has got a fair amount of information. When our client purchased the property by deed recorded in 2015, actually I had a typo in my letter, I apologize. It was February 6, 2015. At that time, the, um, the code was construed by me and the town's attorneys agreed that duplexes were allowed. So we went through the process of the site capacity worksheet because there's EPods on the, on the project, on the property and all, and determined the density and came up with a maximum development density of 38 duplexes or 76 units at the time of the purchase. Then the town board changed the law after our client purchased the property to not allow duplexes on this piece. It was, I mean, it was a town-wide change, but it was, and I think everybody agrees that it was directed at this project to, to limit the, the development. So as a result, the conventional layout and, you know, working with, there's some steep slopes, there's EPod, there's two EPods. There's a woodlot and a steep slope that goes down to Densmore Creek. Our density is limited. We, we showed a design now for 31 lots, which would be allowed, but we want to make, we want to get back up to 62 units. So I think at this point I would, I guess I'd ask John Charaba maybe to explain the design of the project and then Kevin Bruckner will, will explain the analysis as far as why it is not feasible to build 31 single-family detached houses. Just a conventional layout in compliance with the zoning code as amended after our client bought the property is not economically feasible. And then I will get back to maybe just summarizing the, the variance factors.
And just one point of clarification for the board. With respect to the code before the code change that was put into place by the town board staff and the deputy town attorney didn't necessarily definitively agree that these types of units would be permitted as of right, there was some inconsistent ambiguity in the code that that code change was directed to address, but it wasn't our interpretation before the code change that it was crystal clear that these were permitted as of right.
Yeah, the, I mean, the multifamily, we did have an, the board had an interpretation that the multifamily was not allowed at the time. It just, I did include my email to Ms. Champion indicating that the town agreed that duplexes were allowed, but certainly multifamily was not allowed. That was the interpretation of this board.
And, and just a further clarification, if you don't mind, the, the code change was made to close the loophole that was discovered in the language. It was a matter of a missing word in definition essentially and 30-plus years of implementation and interpretation of that code had demonstrated an understanding that it was detached, single-family dwelling units that were intended. And so that just as a context for the board.
And to Carrie's point, I think the fairer statement is that, that loophole was discovered in connection with this project. It wasn't necessarily directed at it, it was just uncovered during that process.
I guess the, the intent was to close the loophole I discovered, so. But again, our client bought with that understanding that that was the interpretation and I go back to any, any reasonable interpretation goes in favor of the property owner, but the, the law has changed, so that's why we're here.
So a brief review of the project as, as we are with the design, it is fairly standard project. We have sewer and water at the, at the road, at Densmore Road. We are proposing a private road network, so this will be non-dedicated features, which helps us with the clustering process. We've prepared a plan, detailing grading plan and site plan, showing stormwater management system that has been designed to meet the Phase II standards. The secret process that we're going through has alluded to some, some issues with the pond. The town engineer has asked us to look a little closer at the pond and its relationship to the steep slope. So that's an issue that we're working through currently right now, but the intent is to have a Phase II compliant pond on the site and it's shown on the Far East Corner. This plan is, is kind of a continuation, continually moving and growing plan. The pond has been changed recently to try to alleviate some of the issues with the slope. Also, the plan shows some separation from the subdivision to the north. We propose a 30-foot buffer to leave that vegetated. That 30-foot buffer is throughout where all the buildings are. So basically, in this area, all the way to here, we propose to leave all the trees that exist there today. And then there's an additional 30 feet of green space before we have a building. So we're, we're 60 feet before we have a building, the 40-foot, there's a 40-foot minimum rear setbacks. We can actually put our buildings a lot closer per the R1 code, but we're sensitive to the neighbors' issue of screening. We've also completed a traffic study that was done by SRF and is part of the secret document. It shows that this project will not have a negative impact on the public way of Densmore Road. As I said, we have adequate sewer, water, gas and electric and I think that will resolve the steep slope issue with the town engineer without any issue. But that's kind of a overview and that's kind of what you asked us to do back in November is go to the planning board because they specialize in the issue of grading and density and things like that. The plan works well and so I can, I can answer any questions you have related to the site.
Now, Kevin Bruckner will, you did, hopefully you all got, we submitted about a week and a half ago, Mr. Bruckner's letter, and he's just gonna briefly go over his analysis.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Bruckner. I'm with the firm Bruckner Tillet Rossi K. Helen Associates. We are a full-service real estate appraisal, analysis and consulting firm located here in Rochester. As Mr. Knopf said, I prepared this, this analysis, this for dollars and cents relative to the use variance and I understand a copy was sent to all of you. I'd like to go through it just very briefly. The first page of the letter, we talk a little bit about the background. Mr. Knopf has already given you a good summary of the background. It's obvious to me that you all know the conditions of a use variance and you all know what we need to prove in terms of a dollars and cents analysis. So I'd like to go right to page two where we talk about rate of return requirements. In order to complete our analysis, we need to understand what the rate of return would be on a residential development. Here in Monroe County and actually throughout the Northeast, a typical rate of return on residential development is about 20 to 25 percent. That is because of the high risk associated with residential development in terms of the length of holding period, the approval process and all the costs associated with that. So that would be a rate of return above the hard costs of development. The hard costs of development being land acquisition, site infrastructure improvements and also the hard cost of actually building the building. and also the hard cost of actually building the building. So beyond that, that is the profit margin that your typical builder is looking for in a residential development.
20%, you say?
20% to 25%.
Okay, thanks.
In addition, in my letter, I set out a case. This case is not necessarily applicable to a residential development. There are very few cases out there where courts have actually established a minimum rate of return. In this particular case, the judge established a rate of between 12% and 15% for a minimum rate of return. Again, it's not necessarily applicable to our analysis because, as I just indicated, residential development requires a much higher rate of return. Going down on page two, we talk a little bit about our data and assumptions. I used a lot of the information provided by Land Tech in their letter dated December 1st, 2014. I found that information to be fairly accurate and applicable. I also address a couple of issues with respect to the town of Arundic quite. I note that the town is nearly fully developed. There's limited vacant residential land zoned for this type of development. The vacant land potentially available for residential development in the town of Arundic quite has several limiting factors, including various size, shape, topography, and certain physical factors. This site is an excellent example of the type of vacant land in the town where you have some physical limitations, which reduces the density on the site. Also, general property values in the town of Arundic quite are reflective of the older and smaller size housing stock in the town, with the exception, of course, of the waterfront properties. Generally speaking, the average price range in the town, it's not high enough to support new construction in terms of a single-family detached housing. There are some exceptions to that, obviously, but in this particular case, I think what we're going to show is that it's not feasible to develop this site for single-family detached housing. Finally, on page three at the bottom is our analysis. What I did is when Land Tech did their summary, they had a $200,000 acquisition price for the land. It was actually $150,000. Their numbers were a little bit different. At the time that they did their analysis, they had 35 single-family detached units and 74 duplexes. The proposal now is for 31 single-family units, or I should say, that's the maximum number of units that could physically be put on the site. And of course, double that would be 62 duplex units. So I took the Land Tech information. I made those two adjustments in the grid below, and we came out with a total unit cost of approximately $134,000 for row houses and approximately $134,000 for duplexes. The detached, single-family homes are significantly higher at $208,000. These are the hard costs. This is the sum of the acquisition price plus the site infrastructure and the actual building cost. It's more costly to build a single-family detached house than it is to build attached So if we look in, just at the detached housing, the 31 single-family homes, if we apply the 12% rate of return, which is the lowest rate of return in that one court decision, we would have to sell those homes, or the developer would have to sell those homes for almost $234,000 in order to achieve a minimum rate of return. If we look at the market rate of return of between 20% and 25%, taking the lower end of that range, the developer would have to sell these same homes for $250,000. Finally, what I did with respect to the single-family homes is I looked at the town of Arundic quite. I looked at sales between 1,400 and 1,600 square feet, bracketing the 1,500 square foot homes that were proposed for the 31 lots. I looked at homes that were less than 15 years of age in the town of Arundic quite, and I went back five years. And what I found was is the highest priced home in the town of Arundic quite in that, with those parameters, was $177,000. I also looked at price per square foot, and using the price per square foot, it was a little bit higher, it was $124 a square foot. You multiply that by 1,500 square feet, you get $186,000. So somewhere between $177,000 and $186,000 is the highest price over the past five years of any home less than 15 years of age in the town of Arundic quite. Of course, that's substantially less than even the hard costs for this proposed development. The hard costs, as I said, were $208,000. So that's actually less than, being less than the hard costs, the rate of return would be negative, substantially negative. And in fact, in this case, it was minus 12.1%. I then took a look at the duplexes and the townhouses, which were proposed.
Before you get, before you move on, looking at your chart, so the per-unit building cost for those 1,500 square foot homes, you have $187,000, $187,500, is that correct?
That's correct.
So do you have anything, just, I know we're not dealing with this tonight, we're not going to decide the issue tonight, it's going to be something we're going to decide another time. Can we see the data to back that up?
Well, the data to back that up is in the last page, which was provided by Land Tech, and Land Tech provided those figures. As I said, I made some adjustments for the acquisition price and the number of units.
I think, yeah, I, excuse me, I think, are you asking about the sale prices or the construction costs?
He's asking about the construction costs.
Per-unit building cost per letter.
That's that last page. Thanks.
So I was using their data that they provided, which I looked at, and it seemed to be reasonable to me. So now we go on to townhouses. As I said, townhouses are a lot cheaper to develop, the density's higher, so the site infrastructure costs are going to be spread out over more units, the acquisition cost is going to be spread out over more units, and that price is $134,000 for the hard costs. So in looking at the townhouses, we would have to, using a rate of return of 12%, we would have to show that the townhouses will be approximately $150,000. Well, let me just find that, just to be exact. Well, I guess what I did is, in the townhouse section, what I did is I figured out what the value of the townhouses would be, and I determined that the value of the townhouses would be $175,000. So then knowing that, I could then figure out what the rate of return was. And in this particular case, if the value of the townhouse is going to be $175,000 and the total unit cost is $134,000, as on page six here, the rate of return is 23.9%. That falls within that range of 20% to 25%. I think it's important to show that not only do we meet the minimum rate of return for the duplex and townhouse development, but we also achieve that rate of return, which is within what's expected from the market developers of 20% to 25%. So finally, on page six are my final conclusions, and that is, is that for this particular site and this particular project, the development of a 31-unit, single-family detached housing project does not generate a reasonable rate of return. In fact, the rate of return is negative. For the development of 62 units, whether they're duplexes or townhouses, the rate of return is positive, it's higher than the minimum, and as a matter of fact, that rate of return is within the market required range of 20% to 25%. Therefore, not only do we meet the minimum rate of return, but we also achieve financial feasibility with the development of the duplexes and townhomes. You have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Your rate of return at your 25% or so, where are you coming up with that? I mean, is that just what the gentleman would like?
No. No, I do a lot of subdivisions. I've been doing this for 32 years. I do a lot of subdivisions. I work with a lot of builders. I see their actual hard costs of development, and I see their actual selling prices of the homes. And those rates of return are what builders are looking for when they're developing a subdivision.
I know what they're looking for, but I've known a few builders over the years, and I know over the years, the rate of return has come down quite a bit, and it's not near that 20% to 25% on average. I would bet that it's about half of that.
Well, don't forget, that's on just the hard cost of development. That 20% to 25% includes your profit and a return on some of your overhead, because you've got, obviously, you've got approval fees, you've got a lot of attorney's fees, you've got a lot of engineering fees. So that 20% to 25% is on top of the hard costs of just the material and labor to install the site infrastructure, you know, construct the building, and obviously purchase the land. So that includes some of that overhead and profit that the developer is looking for to cover some of those expenses.
I also have the same concern, looking at data from city, citidata.com, and I think your numbers are about $20,000 higher than the actual census data show, granted, to 2014, for homes sold in Monroe County. That's county-wide. The second challenge is also the declining population and what the anticipated growth rate from Monroe County is going forward. So this is just a comment with a two development. The question that we, or maybe the planning board, has to ask, are we overdeveloping with these type of apartments and row houses when there doesn't seem to be a need to support it? But maybe I'm missing something. So according to the census data, I think your numbers are a little bit higher. In other words, your rate of return anticipated is a little bit higher than what the data actually shows.
I appreciate that. One thing I will say is that there is a need for affordable housing, affordable new housing, you know, and this provides...
Yeah, but $174,000 isn't affordable for a person who's only making $3,000 or $4,000 a year.
Yeah, but still, to buy a new 1,300-square-foot, either a duplex or townhouse unit, for $175,000 is pretty affordable in today's market. You know, as I said, in order to achieve the proper return for a single-family detached house, that unit would have to sell for $250,000. So that's going to knock a lot of people out of the market.
This data from 2013 is saying Monroe County average sale detached house, 106,000, take into account 4% average inflation rate over the next couple of years, looking at about $171,000, $174,000.
Yeah, kind of supports, I kind of indicated that the single-family detached home would be in the range of $177,000, $180,000, so it kind of matches with exactly what...
It's about $10,000 higher. It's, I'm giving 4% because actually the CPI has only grown by 1.9% a year.
Right.
So I've padded it by 2%, 3%, and I'm saying your numbers are high.
Which numbers are high?
It should be about $170,000 sale, not $180,000.
Okay, but it costs, the costs of building a single-family detached house in this subdivision are $208,000. So the hard cost of building it is over $200,000, but according to my data and your data as well, the sale price would only be $180,000.
No, I disagree with you. I think your data is high. According to what the Census Bureau is showing, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. According to what the Census Bureau is showing, your data is about $10,000 to $15,000 higher than what is actually happening according to the collected data in Monroe County. Not specific to Arundic quite, just Monroe County alone, that's what I have.
I'm agreeing with Mr. Evans. I think your numbers are really high.
Which numbers are those?
Your cost of building the home, including all the costs and infrastructures, just seem a lot higher than...
That gets, I think that gets to the point.
I didn't prepare those costs, and those costs came from Land Tech, so...
Yeah, and I'm going to, I'll speak to that for just a second. I see that on the last page of the sheet that we have, it's assumed that the building, the per-unit building cost is $125 a square foot, which is the national average, but I'm not sure that's the average here in Rochester. I think that the numbers would be less than that. So that would reduce the overall costs that we're talking about. But that's the biggest part of that cost, 100, out of the 208, $187,000 is tied to this $125 a square foot assumption. And I would like to just see something, and I know it's not yours, you're basing your opinion on that assumption that came from someone else. I get it. But I want to see a little more information as to why that assumption is valid. The other question that I do have, if it's okay, is did you run numbers for anything other than 61 or 62 and 31? Like, would it be financially feasible if instead of 62 duplexes, you had 54 duplexes? Did you do any of those calculations?
Well, in answer, direct answer to your question, no. I was only asked to do the 31 and the 62 because those are the maximum. Theoretically, that would be the most feasible, is to have the maximum density on the site.
So have you looked at more square footage, a smaller number of units, or run any other scenarios like that with other variables?
I guess there's an infinite number of scenarios you could come up with. Maybe it's not infinite, but there's certainly a large number of scenarios that you could come up with. I only ran the one scenario at the maximum level. In answer to your first comment there, labor costs and material costs in Rochester, New York are comparable to the national average. I mean, you know, it is costly to build here in Rochester, New York relative to the national average. You know, I own properties down in South Carolina and Florida, and I know the cost of construction down there, the cost of labor is a lot less than it is here in upstate New York. And also trying to find good subcontractors is very difficult.
And insurance costs a lot more in New York State.
Insurance costs, yes, thank you.
Yeah, it does. In doing your numbers for the, for what these houses would sell for and also what these row houses would sell for, I was under the assumption that these were being built to rent them, not to sell them.
I don't know anything about that. I...
And I think that makes somewhat of a difference in reference to rate of return.
Could one of the...
I didn't do that analysis, and I don't know anything about the rental.
Okay.
Mr. Knopf, could you respond to that point, please?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, you know, we did the analysis on for sale. I think our, the developer may plan to rent. We did not, I mean, we could go back and do an analysis on that. We thought the proper analysis was really on the investment on for sale, but we could do, you know, we could go back and figure that on rental.
Well, I mean, that's what he's planning on doing with them.
Yeah, I think that's most likely, yes.
Right. I mean, in doing all the analysis he did on selling them...
The problem was, sort of apples to oranges, because then we'd have to, I guess we went into it trying to compare single-family detached to attached housing. And the single-family detached, we assume, I mean, you're not likely to have 31 houses that you're renting out, so I guess we...
Well, those would be for sale, but...
Yeah. But I guess we proved, I mean, I guess we showed that...
Rate of return.
Yeah, I guess we showed, I mean, that's just not going to work because it's a negative rate of return. Even if we build the maximum amount of houses, we lose money on it, so that doesn't work. So I guess we could go back and do some more analysis on what the rate of return would be on the 62 units, and if it's 54, what that would be to show how that would work out. We could do that. So, and this is part of the reason I wanted to present tonight, to see what questions the board would be, would have, so that when we're hopefully done with the seeker, we could come back, so we could, we could look at some of that. I understand what you're saying, and I thought about, we were trying to compare apples to apples, like for sale and for sale, but, because I guess theoretically, the rent, the for-sale price bakes in the rent, but it is maybe a different analysis. One other, I guess I'll just mention two. In Kevin's analysis, he did not find any townhouses that's really in this category that sold in Arundic quite. I guess there really are not many at all. So we used the... many at all. So, we used the price for, you know, the single-family house price at that square footage. He looked countywide, and actually, the townhouses go comparable or a little bit higher. They actually do, per square foot, they actually do a tad better. But that was sort of the assumption in making the analysis. But we'll go back and look at that.
Don't the townhomes on Thomas Avenue, aren't they sold?
They're not rented.
Yeah, I don't know. They didn't show...
Didn't show up.
Yeah, he didn't...
Built the last 15 years, they're older.
Oh, they're older. Oh, he was looking at ones built, fairly new construction, so maybe that's why it didn't show up. He was looking at housing built in the last 15 years.
Another question, since you were looking for questions. We received a memo from the Conservation Board indicating that they are urging us to enforce the 33-unit limit as calculated in the site capacity worksheet. So, when you're doing the reasonable rate of return figures, you'd mention 62 and 54. If you could also put in 33.
Yeah, I think what happened was the site capacity turned out with 33, but then we tried to lay it out, and we could only really fit 31. Just because of the geometry and where the, you know, setback from the steep slope and all that. So, that's what, I think, correct, John could only figure a way to make 31 single-family houses fit on the site with the roads and staying back from the steep slope and all that kind of stuff.
That would be consistent with what the Conservation Board was talking about, so...
Right. So, and, you know, I went through, I guess it's late, so I won't, I did go through the factors in my letter. The only point, again, about the change in the law was that it was not a self-created hardship, that he went into it thinking he could do the 62 units, or 64, or whatever, you know, whatever, 76, whatever, that he could do duplexes in every lot. And then, the law was either changed, or clarified, or whatever you want to term it.
I was here that evening. She mentioned it a couple of times, that she was not 100% sure. So, the fact that he entered into the purchase of the property after the fact, I mean, based on a question, I think I would have gotten a little better clarification before I, you know...
Well, or maybe Angela says something, but again, in the environmental assessment in Tab B, I mean, I have my email to Ms. Champion where...
I saw it in the packet.
You know, I mean, so, and then I come back to, again, the basic rule of zoning is if there's any ambiguity, it goes in favor of the property owner. So, if she thought it, then we're right.
Right, but there, I mean, there was a subsequent code change, and we can quibble about whether there's vested rights or there's not, but I mean, it would be our position that there's no vested right.
Well, I mean, even if there's no vested rights, my point is, I'm really addressing this for the purposes of self-created hardship, to show, you say there's no vested rights, for sake of argument, but what we're saying is, he bought it at a time we all believe that we could do the, you know, 31 duplexes.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. He purchased it in good faith, believing this was an option, as opposed to, for instance, installing a driveway when you know that's not allowed, and then asking for forgiveness afterwards.
Exactly.
Yes, this is the answer of Mr. LaPerry's question. Mike, I honestly, only reason I purchased this property is because I was under the impression from the counsel, Ashley, and from Mr. Weatherby, that duplexes would be allowed. I specifically asked, are duplexes allowed if I can't do single-family? And I was told yes. That's why I went through and purchased the property. Believe me, I don't need to be spending two years and a pile of money trying to get something like disapproved if it wasn't going to get approved. I mean, I could have went elsewhere. But I really wanted, I really thought that this would be a very, very nice project for Aranacote.
And...
And Mr. Catalani hit the nail, Mrs. Catalani hit the nail on the head when he said that right now, I mean, everything we have was built in the 70s. There's nothing new here in Aranacote for new, young people, or new retirees where they can, you know, have new housing.
Again, and you might be right, he might, he might be right, and I just, the fact that we're going to hang our hat on, you know, we need to decide whether we make the variance.
Right, I understand.
And for the right reason.
Right, I understand. But you have to look at this property, too. I mean, the gentleman that had it before me, he had it for 40 years and wasn't able to do a thing with it. And he's been sitting vacant for 40 years. It's just, it's sad. I mean, it could have been something there, and there's not. And...
I just have a comment. First, I commend all the developers that come here. I think you guys are running for the town, and you're great. I'm looking at builders.com, and for your advisors, what I would recommend is they're showing average home price per square foot, $76. Cost to benefit, average sale of $139.86, and that was updated June 5, 2016. So, I'll force them not to look at the national averages. A lot lower national averages. Your rate of return will be different than national to use the averages from Monroe County, and to use current numbers, as opposed to these big hand-wave numbers, which you use to drive up your profit versus what you're realistically looking into, looking at.
And what was your number? Excuse me?
This is builders.com.
Right, and what was your number for sales price?
$139.86.
$139.86.
And the price per square foot, $76.
So, rounded up to $140 a square foot?
Yeah. 86.
Construction is 76.
76. Yeah. So, that's, but that's the builder's numbers, though. So, that's guys who are putting numbers from the contractors and guys doing the work.
Right. And every town's different. Construction costs for every town are different. I mean, when a project takes a considerable amount of time to get approved, and you're doing a lot more to get it approved, traffic studies, geological studies, all this stuff, I mean, it all goes into the cost of the development.
Absolutely agree. Absolutely agree. But, you know, you guys are great for the life of the town. I would just force her, have hires that go from, down from the national level to what we see here.
Right.
That makes our job easier.
Okay. Thank you.
And John, before you start your presentation, just for Mr. Bruckner, two questions for you when you revise your report. First one is, you mentioned that it was your opinion that the reasonable rate of return for residential is between 20 and 25 percent. Could you just give us the point at which you hit 20 percent, what that number of units would be, assuming, you know, whatever you think the numbers need to be to back up your analysis? Right now, you've got it coming out at 23.7 percent.
I understand.
Yes. What's it look like at 20 percent? And then, what does it look like at the 12 to 15 percent that's cited in that Woodstock v. Auerbach decision that you referenced in your letter?
Would you like me to use 12 or 15?
Same, about 12.
Yeah, I mean, just that general range. Just out of curiosity, what's the number of units that comes out based on that decision?
I could give you 12, 15, and 20.
Okay. Understanding, of course, that that's not binding, you know, it's a third department decision, but it would be good to have it.
Yeah, no, I can do that.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify one point that might help us in the future related to some numbers. Mr. Bruckner mentioned a letter from our office. If you look at the back page of the packet that Mr. Bruckner handed you, we prepared construction costs, engineers' estimate of the facilities that are proposed to be constructed. And that's, and those are numbers that we just didn't pull out of the sky. Those are numbers that we use throughout numerous projects throughout the county. We prepare letters of credit that have to be approved by the town. So, we use real numbers for that. So, we're looking at, for the dedicated homes of right at 700,000, and then, just for the detached homes, $25,000 less. So, we're pretty consistent there. I just wanted to mention that as we move forward, bringing to use these numbers. I'm very comfortable with them. And the rest that you're going to do with Mr. Bruckner, I just want, this is the benchmark we're going to hold. Thank you.
I think they can conclude our presentation. The rest is in our paperwork.
So, is there anyone here who, at this point, would like to speak in favor of the application? Don't all rush at once. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone here who would like to talk to us about the application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter, and we will be in recess until 11:30. 11:30.
Thank you very much.
4116 Highwood Drive. I think we should approve it. I don't think it'll affect the character of the neighborhood. It is a self-created issue because I'd like to fence in the yard for safety and for their dogs, I believe. I do want to make one exception. She did say that she would change the fence so it didn't have the prongs on the top. Again, it's a self-created issue. Not going to change the character of the neighborhood. It's not going to be an environmental issue. Based on the criteria, I think it should be approved.
I'll second with the additional finding that living on a corner lot, I would say, is not self-created. And these corner lots are things that they have to deal with. So to the extent that they're on a corner lot, that's not self-created. But I second the motion.
And the condition of granting it is that there be no points?
No prongs on the top of the fence. And she did say she would get the...
Okay.
It's a decorative black iron fence or black fence.
Right.
Without the prongs on the top.
Are you concerned about the lower prongs?
No. No, I'm just, the upper ones, I'm worried about somebody falling off a bike.
So just on the top of the fence. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we continue to all be present. Next application relates to 738 Brown Road. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion. If the board doesn't want to second me, that's fine. But I want to make a motion that we deny this application. We do not grant the variance on Brown Road for the following reasons. Firstly, this is entirely self-created. The fact that he has a lot of stuff that he wants to hide away somewhere, squirrel it away, I don't see how that justifies the need to give him this variance to have additional garage space. Secondly, I do recall when he was here before us the first time, and he told us that he did not need this extra space because this garage would be enough for everything. And he is now coming back asking for more when he should have asked for that in the first instance. Whether or not he put siding up and took it down and put it back up, I think is secondary to the fact that when he came to us in the beginning, he said this is what he needed. We gave him, we granted him a variance in the first instance, and for him coming back for more, I think, I just don't see the basis for it. It is self-created, and it would be a change to the character of the neighborhood in that people continue to want more and more garage space. He also said that there is a less drastic means to accommodate his issue putting up a taller fence. He did say that if he put up a fence and he were to, you know, go around the side of the house and around it, that would protect his material, it would keep it private, and it would not require us to grant him the variance. So there is a reasonable alternative, and for those reasons, I move that we deny the request.
I second it.
I got you written down first.
Okay.
Any discussion?
First of all, I don't really think this is going to change the character of the neighborhood because the neighborhood is very spread out. There's only a couple of buildings and a whole side of the road. So I don't think anybody really cares if there's an extra storage area. And then also some very good support from neighbors on a previous visit that he made here when he went outside the box, so to speak. I also appreciate the fact that he was willing to comply with our request and that he basically sort of threw himself on the mercy of this board by apologizing for going ahead. So, and the final thing is, when you have anything outside like that, even if it's under a roof, it's subject to thievery. And people can just see it there. And I don't think a taller fence would actually solve that problem, especially since it's such a simple matter for him to enclose that. And I thought that he, in a way, paid his dues and came back and made the request. So I'm going to vote negatively on this motion.
Just to follow a little bit of opposition, the way this all, step by step, went in front of our board, I failed to see the patting the gentleman on the back for something that I believe he knew he shouldn't have done. And again, this goes to everybody in the town that asks permission after the fact, you know, or asks forgiveness. I'm sorry. You know, they're supposed to get permission and ask for forgiveness. Now, if somebody didn't call it in or somebody didn't notice it, he'd have been all set. Unfortunately, based on when we gave him, and I specifically remember this case, when we gave him that large garage in the first place, he had that huge shed in the backyard, and he's got all kinds of stuff in it. You know, we spoke about not doing what he did, and he did it anyway. So I'm glad he was nice enough to take it down. Like Mr. Polino said, there's alternatives to covering it up and keeping it private. Doing that wasn't the right way.
I think this is different from the garage on Sagamore because the Sagamore garage is in a totally residential neighborhood. There are houses on both sides, there's houses across the street, there's houses up and down the street. This gentleman's house is sort of like an island unto itself. You know, he's on the edge of a commercial area. He's across the street from a residential area, but he backs up to a school, and he has a lot of traffic. So I don't view it as being the same issue as with respect to Sagamore. On the other hand, though, I also recall when the application first came in and we had a discussion about approving a thousand-plus-square-foot garage when there was already a shed. And the area on the outside, I recall, and I did go back and try to find it, and I was not successful. The quality of the video leaves something to be desired from that meeting. But as Mr. LaPerry recalls, I recall discussion about having that outside area eventually enclosed to make it an even larger garage. And if it hadn't been, if we hadn't been assured that that wasn't going to take place, I don't think we would have approved it. When it first came in front of us, we would have told him he can have the enclosed area and nothing more than that. So that's where I come down different on this as opposed to some of the other garages that we've had. But I would agree that it... And in terms of him taking it down, yes, I'm glad that he did that, but it shouldn't have been put up. And he took it down because really he had no alternative but to take it down. And it did look nice, and he does good work, and I know that the neighbors thought that it all looked nice. But I just don't think, if we let him do that, then I'm hard-pressed to tell other people, like we told that gentleman on whatever that road is that goes by the bay, we cut his garage way back. We told him he could park stuff in the back rather than having it under wraps. And, you know, the gentleman on Sagamore, I mean, that's why I was asking the questions about him because he's already saying that there's two of them, they have four vehicles. They got two young kids, and they're going to have two more vehicles. And then I see that now we need six cars under wraps in the garage, and we've got more stuff. We've had other things where we've had wider driveways to accommodate more cars. And at some point, I think people have to say, I'm only going to have the cars that I can fit in my driveway or park on the street. Or we're going to just have paved front yards and huge garages that are bigger than the houses that they're...
Well, that's another particular point. This over, just the garage alone, is 100 square foot bigger than the house. Now you add the 100 square foot of the shed, and then the overhang, you know, it's 300 square foot larger than the house. So it just, it doesn't look, it doesn't look like a residential spot.
It's a situation where the house is pertinent to the garage.
And the only thing that changed from this application, for this applicant, from the first time he came to us and asked to build this garage till now, the only thing that changed is he has more stuff. And that in and of itself is not a basis for expanding the variance that we gave him in the first instance.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Discussion? All those in favor of the application, of the motion to deny the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Five votes in favor. And four, two votes opposed. No abstentions. We all continue to be present.
Who was the second? Russ and who was the second person?
Bob. Next item on the agenda pertains to the properties at 202 and 204 Totem Trail. This is also a type-two action for secret purposes, I believe.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I would make a motion. Well, I don't know how to, this motion, I think we need some variation of this island. Make a motion that we approve... How would I say that? Do we approve the motion, but...
What do we want, what do you want to accomplish? Having an island partway up the driveway?
Yeah, partway up the driveway. From the...
What was proposed was a 50-foot island on the thing. Did you want to go 25 feet?
Um, let's see. Yes, from the, from the, from the outside of the, near the road, back 25 feet as opposed to...
It shows as 90 feet on the 2011 plan.
Yeah, I was going to say, it shows at 90 feet.
90?
Yeah.
The driveway's 90 feet?
Just that part, just the island's 90 feet. The driveway's longer than that.
I thought it was 50.
All right, let's...
Guess those eyes aren't working good.
I want to say 50 feet from, from the farthest point of the, where he starts it at the road, back 50 feet toward the houses, which it'll actually bring it about equal to the front setback of the 202. So the island should come back 50 feet.
All right, so...
50, 55.
What would you, what would you think about, to the front foundation, the westernmost foundation of the property closest to Totem Trail and Seneca Park Avenue?
Yeah.
So it would actually go all the way back to the front of the house, which would be about 52 feet.
Right. That's, okay.
All right, so we're...
50 feet, 52 feet.
So the motion then would be to...
Install an island.
Part of it's in the right of the block, yeah. Part of it's still in there.
Yeah, I mean, the way it was...
More than 50, it's going to be 50.
Oh, no, it's not.
So I think what we're talking about is that the motion is to grant the variance beginning at a point that is equal to the westernmost foundation line of the property at 202, which is the one that's actually on the corner, and further east from there. That's the variance.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
So just from the property line to the foundation?
Well, actually, a little bit more than the property line because it starts...
Right, it starts out at the setback, from the, from the road setback to the front foundation of 202.
Just a point of clarification, what would that accomplish?
What would that accomplish? Aesthetically pleasing, aesthetically appealing. It would still give him a nice wide area where he likes it up by the house for parking quite a few vehicles. But it'll be aesthetically pleasing. It'll help in the environmental with some water runoff. And it'll abide by his original site plan.
Excuse me, just a quick clarification. So the variance would actually be for the area outside of where you're proposing the pavement to, or the planted median area to occur?
Variance would...
Start at the...
Start at the west foundation line of the northern house.
Correct.
And extend east.
No, extend west.
No, this isn't north.
Oh, the variance, oh, I see. Okay.
You're asking for the...
Yeah.
No, that's not the variance.
The planter would have to go to the west.
The variance would be for the driveway between the two homes.
And up to the foundation line of...
Between the two homes.
The western foundation line.
As the foundation lines are, you know, between the two homes.
Yeah, all right.
Gary's point is that the variance is the rest of the way after you hit the front foundation line.
Right. You hit the western foundation line of the property, which I think is 202, the northern property. And then it goes east from there. That's the variance.
Correct.
Where it doesn't have to have the planter, but it has to be further up from there.
Perfect.
All right. Is there a second for that? I'll second that. Any discussion? I did. Get the thing balls rolling. Any discussion?
So I'm still confused at the purpose of this is because when it was originally approved, there wasn't a need for a planter, correct?
Well, that issue wasn't in front of us at the time.
It wasn't part of our...
What was in front of us at the time was approving variations in the lot size and setbacks. And we approved that for the location of the houses. There was no request for a variance with respect to the requirement that there be a two-foot setback for each driveway. That wasn't in front of us, it wasn't asked for, and it wasn't, there was no planter that was shown on the plans that were submitted, but there was no request for a variance to allow the driveway to be one 24-foot driveway, or whatever it is, 28 feet. And when the planning board reviewed it, the planter was inserted in, which complied with the zoning requirements at the time, provided for the two-foot setback. And that's what was signed off on by the town and the engineers and everybody else on that subdivision map. So there was no variance, and there was no need for a variance on the map as it was signed off. Our approval was subject to site plan approval by the planning board, and as part of that process, they imposed the planter. So now what we're being asked to do is revisit the issue of the two-foot...
Setback.
Setback. And the applicants indicated his preference for not having the planter. And the neighbors have expressed that because the planter was shown on the first, on the approved subdivision plat as originally proposed, that that should be enforced. And what the motion does is say, all right, for the part that is actually impacts the neighbors, we'll go with what was originally recommended by the planning board. But for the rest of it, we're going to let them work it out for themselves.
Okay.
All right?
And just to follow up to what the chairman discussed with the board, I'm looking at the 2011 approval resolution from this board, and what was before you was a subdivision application of a 1.12-acre lot to split it into two lots. And since each lot became substandard and non-conforming, you were considering variances for lot width, lot depth, and lot area. You weren't considering the location of the houses on the lots or anything like that. Or setbacks or any of that. No.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
What, um, did you have findings with your motion?
Yes, it won't impact the environment. Not substantial.
Okay.
The alternative that doesn't require a variance is to go with the planter that was set forth on the thing. It's, you know, this possible change to the neighborhood character, the variance that we're granting isn't going to affect the character of the neighborhood in one bit because it's going to back up on the property where the property owners are. It's not a substantial request, and it's not going to have any adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions if it's, if it's granted.
Thanks for the help.
Your word. Any other discussion?
Yes, I've got a question about this because it seems like we're kind of half and half on this. And I'm wondering, I mean, the people that live there don't want it. The neighbors want it, at least some of them do. People that don't, I mean, how specific does this planter have to be? I mean, are there dimensions to it or is it made out of brick?
It's got to be four, it's got to be four feet wide.
So we're not necessarily approving a planter or requiring a planter. What we're requiring is a two-foot setback where there wouldn't be asphalt pavement two feet from the lot line. So there's not necessarily a requirement that there be a planter. That would be tied to the original 2011 site plan that was approved by the planning board. So it would be worth making a reference in this resolution that on the site plan that's approved, that planter area was required by the planning board. You're just giving some relief as to the length of that planter. This board isn't requiring a planter.
So we could redo this driveway, which is grass in the middle.
Could, or you could put gravel. All we're saying is they have to comply with the setbacks. They can do whatever they want.
Did you get what the attorney said?
Does this go back to the planning board or no?
No, because we're, no, we're just doing what he said. We're, part of the finding is that when the planning, when the planning board reviewed after we granted the variances to subdivide the lot and allow for two houses to be built on the property, we made our decision subject to planning board approval, and the planning board approved the site plan with a planter shown dividing the driveway for a length of 90 feet. And we're approving a variance from that from the point that would be even with the western boundary further east so that the area of the driveway where the homeowners are most directly affected is going to be allowed to not have a setback, but the area of the driveways that is visible to the neighborhoods and more, more of concern to the neighborhood than the homeowners, that's going to, we're not granting a variance as to that. So they're going to have to reference and comply with the original site plan.
And at least the sheets that we have in front of us, there's no specificity as to what has to be in this planting strip. There's just a reference that it's a planting strip. So it could be grass, it could be mulch. There's no requirement of curbing or anything like that, at least on the sheet that I have.
And I was actually going to make the same clarification. For the purposes of your action, you might want to make a reference to a planting strip versus a planter. Planter is typically a structure of some sort.
Well, what we're saying is that there's no variance from the two-foot setback for that portion of the driveway.
Okay.
I suppose he could put planter boxes for two feet on top of the driveway without digging anything up. I don't know.
Yeah, I would...
It would depend on the town's interpretation of...
I would just suggest that we say, you know, from the, from the lot line, two feet into 202 and two feet into 204, there's to be no vehicular ingress or egress, you know, from that western corner back or something like that.
It's called a planting strip, so whatever, you know, grass, shrubs, whatever he wants to plant there.
Yeah, it's just not... Why, why wouldn't the resolution just say that you grant the variance beginning at the westernmost foundation of 202 going eastward? And that's it?
That is what it says.
All right, so you don't have to say anything else about planter.
The rest was in the findings.
Now, that being said, if we're still discussing it, I am absolutely going to vote against this motion because I have heard nothing to justify the request at all, other than the fact that this applicant doesn't want to spend money. They knew in 2011 that this was an issue. They went ahead, they put the driveway in, and then the applicant loses his temper and raises his voice at this board because we're saying, come on, Charlie, I don't see any reason to do this other than to put money in the applicant's pocket, and I don't see that's a just, I don't think that's a justification for granting a variance.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That was Mr. Polino and Mr. Thomas. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Five votes in favor.
Secondly, I thought it was Bob.
Two opposed. Bob, did you vote nay?
No, I voted yes.
Okay.
I couldn't hear it was Thomas.
No abstentions. The next item on this agenda is 4140 St. Paul Boulevard. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. This is an application to put a four-foot-high ornamental fence around the perimeter. Motion, does anyone wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the variance as applied for, for 4140 St. Paul Boulevard, allowing them to install a four-foot-high decorative fence based on the following findings. The request is to provide safety for their children, and this is a corner lot. It is not self-created, the fact that they're on a corner lot on a busy street. There would be no undesirable change in the neighborhood with this particular decorative fence, particularly as the corner of Sagamore and Thomas has the exact same fence that they're looking to do. Actually, we think this would improve the quality of the neighborhood. The benefit of safety on a corner lot cannot be achieved by a feasible alternative, particularly where the applicant testified that cars are always going in and out of their driveway to turn around in that otherwise congested intersection. The requested variance is not substantial and would have no impact on the environment whatsoever.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We all continue to be present. The next and last item on the agenda pertains to 375 Bayfront Lane North. This is an unlisted action, correct?
Unlisted action.
And so I would make a motion that we make a negative...
I would suggest that we see what the board's pleasure is on tabling the matter. If the board's inclined to table the matter, we don't need to do seeker this evening.
Perfect. I'll make a motion to table the application.
I second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I see no reason to delay this any further. This applicant, after two sessions, has not even been able to tell us how much she paid for this particular parcel, and we have kind of bent over backwards to allow this. So I see no reason to further delay this. I think that the chair was extremely helpful at the initial hearing and gave this applicant all the information that she needed. And of course, we have a very apt town staff who also could have helped this applicant, and this applicant just has not provided the evidence we needed. And I'm not sure how much time is needed or what any additional time would do.
I think, I'm thinking that we should give this applicant the time that she needs to figure it out. Owning a home and owning property, especially in this area, is difficult. Then I have also a good feeling that she's being forced to maybe give up property that she's not fully aware of or have been misled by. I can have $20,000 and buy all the property that my neighbors have as long as they don't have the, as long as they're sheep and their cows, too. So it's just something about this, Max, to me, I know that we're not here for it as being improper. So I vote for the leniency of giving her the ability to do the research and to figure out where, what the use of this property should be.
I agree with Mr. Evans. I think we should table it.
I agree with that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Six votes in favor. One opposed. No abstentions. And we all continue to be present.
We'll take this one.
We have several other matters that we need to address before we can adjourn. First is, with the packets of information that we all received for this meeting, we received proposed minutes for the meeting that we had in April, I think it was April 4th of 2016. Did everyone receive those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, not to interrupt, but do we have to do anything with Patton, with Thomas Avenue and Patton Wood and with Dunsborough in reference to pending them or... Thomas Avenue and Patton Wood, and with Densmore in reference to pending them or tabling them, or it's just an automatic?
It's automatic because we can't make a decision because the seeker process hasn't been completed.
So there's still, there's still an open meeting.
And the hearings are open for both.
Hearings are still open. So...
Pending?
They're pending, they're open. Did everyone receive the April meeting minutes?
Yes.
And did everyone have an opportunity to review them? I would move to accept the April minutes as prepared. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. You abstain?
It wasn't part of the...
Oh, okay. So the motion carries, six votes in favor, one abstention because Mr. Paulino was not present in April. The May minute, meeting minutes were also received with the package for this evening's meeting. Did everyone receive and have an opportunity to review those? I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
For the May meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We're all present. We also have been, and I had, I should, let me back up. I received letters as the chairman asking me to sign off on the town board being the lead agency under seeker for a proposed sidewalk project on portions of Lake Shore Drive and Oak Ridge Drive that would consist of the installation of approximately 900 linear feet of sidewalk on the south side of Lake Shore Boulevard connecting the east, existing sidewalk east of Colebrook Drive to Camp Eastman Way in the town of Arundicote, and would include the installation of approximately 5,000 linear feet on the east side of Oak Ridge Drive from Pine Grove Avenue connecting to the existing sidewalk located at Tulip Tree Lane in the town of Arundicote. I do not feel comfortable acting, you know, signing off on these things just as the chairman without consulting with all the other members of the board. So I would ask, at this point, I would move that we agree to, or that we do, that we resolve that we have no objection to the town board acting as lead agency for the sidewalk installment and retaining wall replacement.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? And any abstentions? And then I also received another letter with the same request, only for a sidewalk project on Titus Avenue that would install approximately 1,330 year, 1,330 linear feet east of Garden Road to the east of the intersection of Allwood Drive on the north side of Titus Avenue in the town of Arundicote, which includes the replacement of a failed retaining wall located on the north side of Titus Avenue, east of Garden Road, to the west of the intersection of Allwood Drive in the town of Arundicote.
Old metal retaining wall?
I think it's the metal retaining wall. They're talking about...
Replacement.
They're talking about sidewalk, though I don't recall there being, they must be putting in a new sidewalk.
Installation of new sidewalk.
Along that, along the wall.
And then moving, relocating, and repairing and replacing the existing failing retaining wall. It's a county right-of-way. It's actually a county project, I believe. Don't quote me on that, but I'm, it's in the county right-of-way.
I was a kid.
Uh huh, me too. So I would...
That's far back.
That far back. So I would move that we resolve that we have no objection to the town board acting as lead agency for that project as well. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We're all still present, and we are adjourned.
One question.